Councilmember De Akkauer, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Apostle Nikki Hampton, a senior pastor at Fresh Start Worship Center, to lead us in prayer. Apostle, thank you so much for being here.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Harden. Council, good evening. Good evening, everyone. Would you pray with me, please? God, we are incredibly grateful to be here tonight. We are grateful to have this time and space that you have given us to convene for all of the matters that are at hand. In this season of giving thanks, we are grateful for the leadership of this council. We're grateful for the leadership of this city. We're grateful for the leadership of the community. Our prayer tonight is that you would continue to help us to stand strong, continue to give us wisdom, guidance, continue to help us to know the way in which we should go. Again, we are grateful, and we are so thankful, because in times such as these, in any and every time, you have never ceased to be our strength, our peace, our guidance, and a leadership. So blessed tonight, as you always do, and we thank you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timborosa, De Podia, Beatty, De Akkauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Vice President Harden. Any person who takes any action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I go get a motion statement for the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timborosa, De Podia, Beatty, De Akkauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published into the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go around the dials for any announcements and resolutions from my colleagues. Starting with Councilmember Banks.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to try not to shout into the mic. OH?
I-O.
OH?
I-O.
All right, it's beating Michigan week, so I wanted to make sure I got that out the way. I got my red on today. I know, I accidentally had a blue suit picked out this morning. I said, what am I doing? No, I just want to say I'm excited about the Ohio State Buckeyes. We're going to beat Michigan this week, and we're looking forward to that. But no, a serious announcement, we are starting the process of our 2026 operating budget. So we will have our first public hearing on that on Thursday, December 18th, at 3:00 PM here in council chambers. And so that will be the first of many, but just wanted to make sure that we are inviting folks out to that again on December 18th, here in council chambers at 3:00 PM. Thank you, Council President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Rosada de Podia.
Thank you, Council President. First, as we kick off this season of gratitude and giving, however you may celebrate, I wish you and yours a happy, festive, safe time with friends and family. The following week after Thanksgiving, I will be hosting two public hearings. The first is on Tuesday, December 2nd, at 4:00 PM. I'll be hosting a public hearing at City Hall to discuss proposed changes to City Code Chapter 2150. This chapter governs procedures, penalties, and enforcement of parking violations. The proposed changes to the code will clarify definitions and clear up inconsistencies. You'll be hearing from two members of the Department of Public Service, Division of Planning and Operation Administrator, Amanda Ford, and Mobility and Parking Services Division Administrator, Justin Goodwin. I'll hold another hearing on Thursday, December 4th, at 4:00 PM here at City Hall to discuss right-of-way certification of appropriateness and approval. The proposed legislation seeks to clarify that the City of Columbus is not legally required to obtain a certificate of appropriateness or a certificate of approval from commissions with historic architectural or design review authority when performing or authorizing work in the right of way. Certificate of appropriateness is a document that allows property owners in historic districts and design review districts to proceed with work on their property. The City of Columbus is a large property owner and owns the public right-of-way. Right-of-way are things like sidewalks, roads. Public right-of-way means any street, boulevard, road, highway, sidewalk, alley, or easement that is owned, leased, or controlled by a government entity. The city needs to be able to do work in the right-of-way. So if you would like to provide written or public testimony at either of these hearings, please email ASLamoose, that's A-M-I-S-L-A-M-O-U-S, at columbus.gov before 12:00 PM on the day before the hearing that you are interested in. So I look forward to having the conversation. I look forward to seeing you, and again, have a happy holiday.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Beatty.
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember De Akkauer.
I wanted to point out these wonderful people from the Ohio Hispanic Coalition who are here this evening celebrating the work of their summer youth program. Did you guys want to come forward and share a little bit about it?
Good evening. Thank you so much, Councilmember De Akkauer. Good evening, Council President Harden and members of city council. My name is Sarah Demeo. I serve as a program officer for the Ohio Hispanic Coalition, a Latino-led nonprofit agency established in 1990. Our mission is to improve the well-being and quality of life of all Latinos through advocacy, education, training, and access to quality services. I want to begin by sincerely thanking city council and the City of Columbus for supporting our 2025 Summer Youth Program grant, which funded our Niños en Acción, which means Kids in Action, summer STEM academy. This eight-week program provided a safe, enriching bilingual learning environment for our low-income Latino youth ages six to 13, many of whom face language and cultural barriers, academic gaps, and limited access to structured summer activities. With the city's support, our program integrated STEM education, robotics, science experiments, art, sports, and social emotional learning. Youth receive daily academic support, mentorship, and cultural activities to build confidence, leadership, and emotional development. We also provided free meals, field trips, and adjusted program hours to ensure accessibility for our working parents. This approach was used to holistically address summer learning loss and promote interest in STEM-related careers among Latino youth to eradicate poverty among all of our residents. This past summer, we proudly served 112 participants, over 71% directly supported by the City of Columbus funding, and over 93% of participants attended at least 70% of the program. Participants demonstrated measurable gains in reading, math, teamwork, problem-solving, and self-confidence. These words tell, their words actually tell the best with their story. So Elizabeth, age seven, shared that camp helped her make new friends and support a classmate who's learning English. Miguel, age 10, said building his first robot made him feel proud and excited to learn more. And Jenny, age 12, told us, "I didn't think summer camp could do much for me, but now I have a reason to get up every day. I feel safe and happy." These experiences reflect what intentional culturally-specific program makes possible. In a time when misinformation and fear deeply affect our Latino communities, programs like ours help restore belonging, access, and opportunity. Councilmember De Akkauer, members of council, on behalf of our agency, we'd like to thank you for your leadership in ensuring that every resident has meaningful access to city resources and for your acknowledgement of the need for culturally-responsive services and its positive impact for over 8% of our city's population being Latino-Hispanic. As a token of our appreciation, we would like to present a photo of our summer program participants to Councilmember De Akkauer. We respectfully ask that the city continues providing intentional funding for community-based culturally-specific programs like ours, so that all Columbus youth can learn, grow, and thrive. Thank you so much. Thank you again.
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Press pro temp, Dorance.
Thank you, Council President. No resolutions tonight, but did want to pause and acknowledge an exciting recognition that Columbus Public Health received this past month. So about a little less than a year ago, this body passed what is the first in this country, a change to our nuisance law to address the epidemic of individuals drowning in open water and retention ponds across the city of Columbus. We changed our nuisance code to allow our folks in the Department of Billion Zoning Services to better regulate those ponds because we had seen over and over and over again, particularly young people, die in those ponds. And this was a big change and worked very collaboratively with both the Department of Billion Zoning Services and Public Health on that legislation. But there was also a second component of it, was not only educating residents that live nearby, but also the installation of lifesaving equipment at those facilities to make sure that if someone did find themselves in that situation, there was something there to help folks nearby help provide some assistance in rescuing individuals. And very excited to hear that the Columbus Public Health Child Injury Prevention Team was recognized with a 2025 Ohio Injury Prevention Partnership Promising Practice Award from the Ohio Department of Health in recognition of these efforts. Lifesaving equipment has been installed in over 120 different apartment complexes across Columbus to help better protect lives in our communities. So just wanted to pause and recognize their efforts implementing this legislation. Because one thing to come up with good public policy, it's another thing to have folks in Public Health and Billion Zoning Services to make sure it gets implemented in a way that will save lives. So just want to take a moment and thank them for their efforts in making that happen. That's all I have.
That's awesome. Councilmember Green. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President. I'd like to reflect on last week's decision. As you're aware, council recently approved a settlement involving a former employee in my office. I was scheduled to be out of town attending the National League of Cities Conference when the vote occurred, but I wanted to take the opportunity to speak publicly today. I had a valued employee who had a negative experience while working in my office. This is someone I care about, just as I care about every member of my team I work with. I want to acknowledge that, even without intention, my actions impacted this employee negatively, and I deeply regret that. I'm a passionate person. I speak loudly at times, and yes, I can swear. This passion comes from a deep commitment to serving the residents of Columbus, but passion alone is not an excuse for creating an environment where someone feels uncomfortable. I take that very seriously. Over the past few months, I've been working to be better. I have been participating in professional management coaching and leadership development to ensure that everyone I work with has a positive experience while serving our city. I also want to be clear about a few things raised publicly. We work in a political environment, and many city hall employees voluntarily participate in political and campaign activities on their own time. That is common and allowed, but it is never required by anyone at council, and especially not by me. As for those that were involved in the FMLA portion of the settlement, I believe they have taken accountability and that we, as a council, will all benefit from having reexamined our HR procedures. I want to be clear, I am committed to continuing to grow as a person, a manager, to building a healthy team environment, and to earning the trust that the residents of Columbus have placed in me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Waich.
Thank you, Council President. Just two quick announcements this evening. First, with the new utility rate structure for 2026 on the agenda this evening, we thought we might have some residents who may come to the meeting with questions. Columbus Water and Power staff are set up in Room 225, just right down the hall, to assist any residents that are present with discount programs, sign up, or bill in questions. Please let one of the council or department staff know if you need assistance, and they can help get you to the right place. Last, but certainly not least, to our residents, if you or someone you know is struggling to put a Thanksgiving meal on the table or simply are in need of community on the holiday, you can join me and our partners at Step in the Right Direction for a home-cooked Thanksgiving meal at Glenwood United Methodist Church at 2833 Valley View Drive from 11:00 to 3:00 PM on Thanksgiving Day. You can take your food to go or stay and eat with your neighbors. I hope to see you all there. If you're interested in volunteering, the link to the sign-up is in my social media bios. And if I might toot my own horn, I do throw down in the kitchen, so you may want to come out and check that out. So thank you, Council President, for supporting me this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. It's Thanksgiving week, and so wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I'm actually not going to let Councilmember Remy off the hook that easy. As per our tradition, he usually leans into the mic and loudly says what he's grateful for this Thanksgiving. I think we shouldn't pass this up without hearing what you're thankful for this Thanksgiving.
Well, thank you, Council President. That is something that I typically do. I'm really thankful for this city coming back from the National League of Cities and being with leaders from all across this country, from large cities to small villages. We all share a lot of the common, a lot of common problems. We also have a lot of bright ideas, and in this current environment, we have a lot to celebrate at the local level. We realize as a nation that this municipalities are where the rubber hits the road. This is where the things happen that matter the most to our residents. And as a leader in a city like Columbus, it is great to work with colleagues that are specifically committed to moving this city forward. I'm very thankful for what we have in the City of Columbus. I'm thankful that we, the challenges that I see in cities like Austin, cities like Nashville, Salt Lake City, for that matter, where we were, we have it pretty good here in Columbus. And it's because of the leadership that moves, that works collectively together to move this city forward. And I appreciate the collaboration, the partnership, and I'm very thankful for all of you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Are there any comments from the city attorney's office, clerks, or auditor? Seeing none, are there any requests by members of council for the removal of ordinance on the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may I now have a motion to waive the readings of titles of third aid legislation by the clerk? Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timborosa, De Podia, Beatty, De Akkauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, would you read the, into the record, the ordinance numbers of third aid legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
In Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance 2835, 2883, 3049, 3055, and 3069-2025. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, we have ordinance 2943, 3155, 3156, 3161-2025. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 3136-2025. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee, ordinance 2966, 3018, 3045, 3051, 3058, 3062, 3101, 3104, 3113-2025. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinance 20, I'm sorry, 3027, and 3037-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinance 2946, 2976, 2983, 3032, 3063, 3079, 3100, and 3114-2025. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinances 3102, 3116, 3117, and 3118-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent. Will you read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 258X-2025. Finance and Governance Committee, ordinances 2874, 3043, 3044, 3060, and 3093-2025. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinance 3208-2025. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances 2912, 2961, 2963, 3015, 3048, 3129, 3130, and 3131-2025. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee, ordinances 2911, 2941, 2944, 2967, 30, and 3206-2025. Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee, ordinances 2614 and 3215-2025. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinance 2962-2025. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinances 2910, 3034, and 3097-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances 2780, 2819, 2839, 2873, 2877, 2880, 2901, 2907, 2918, 2921, 2923, 2993, 3003, 3007, 3025, and 3029-2025. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinances 2914, 2951, 2982, 3021, 3022, 3023, 3038, 39, 39, 3046, 3052, 3086, 3121, and 3240-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, I'm moved to, for approval by voice. Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Banks. Rosada de Podia. Beatty.
Yes, with the exception of ordinance number 2982 and ordinance number 3021, for which I abstain.
De Akkauer.
Yes.
Dorance. Green. Remy.
Yes.
Waich.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, the consent portion passes with the noted exceptions. We'll now go to, we're actually going to go out of order this evening and go to the Rules and Policy Committee. I chair that committee, and all members serve on it, but we're going to throw it over to Councilmember Beatty, who has ordinance 2526-2025. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight, in second reading under Rules and Policy, I have ordinance 2526-2025. It is to repeal and amend various sections of Title 33 of the Columbus City Code and Title Zoning Code to allow for accessory dwelling units, ADUs, in all residential and apartment residential districts to allow for habitable space not directly connected to a dwelling unit and to enact newly designed terms and new sections for the development of standards related to sheds, utility enclosures, and fences. As part of the Columbus Forward package, council tonight will be able to say yes in your backyard. Tonight's ADU code change legislation is a result of 10 months of research and collaboration between city council, the administration, various stakeholders, and the residents of Columbus. Most of Columbus's residential lots are zoned for single-family housing only, meaning that only one dwelling unit can exist or be built on the lot under the zoning code, hindering the opportunity for more missing-middle housing, such as duplex, triplex, fourplex, and ADUs. Now, ADUs encourage and promote multi-generational living, wealth-building, mixed-income neighborhoods, light density, and affordable housing choices for our families and homeowners. Currently, a homeowner or resident seeking to add an ADU to their property, whether it is attached, detached, in a carriage house, garage unit, must request a variance in order to add the second unit. And then in most instances, an additional six to eight variances must also be requested for the approval of the additional unit. Some of those variances include fronting, side yard, rear yard, minimum lot coverage, and parking. This required variance process adds significant time, six to eight months or longer, in expense, additional attorney fees, architectural fees to assist with the extra hearings and meeting before numerous bodies and committees, and variance filing fees. The current process acts as a disincentive to add or create these housing units. The ADU legislation allows residents, families, and property owners to create these additional dwelling units without going through this various process as long as the proposed unit falls within certain restrictions for size, height, and number of each of the, in each of the residential districts. Now, ADUs, because they are dwelling units, must still comply with all applicable building codes for building integrity and life safety, just like other types of residential units. Any ADU that is, and any ADU that's going to be used for rental purposes will also be subject to all current regulations for rental units, such as the short-term rental registry and future rental restrictions, such as the rental registry. Tonight's ADU legislation has been supported by citizen groups, advocacy groups such as AARP Ohio, who will be speaking to the legislation tonight, the Board of Realtors, Convergence, just to name a few. We examined over 25 cities across the country and spoke with city officials in four other cities. Our stakeholder outreach in this legislation consisted of guidance and feedback from architects, zoning and land use lawyers, media stories, interviews, and AARP webinar, social media, homeowner and homeowner interviews, area commission outreach, constituent meetings. And we had three public hearings on July 22nd, September 10th, October 29th that resulted in a total of 42 public and written testimonies. We also collected feedback from 191 residents during a 60-day public comment period from August 27th to October 25th. And I'm just grateful for the support and confidence offered by my colleagues. Council President Harden, President Pro Temp Rob Dorance, and the Department of Building and Zoning Services have been far, have been bar none. I would also like to say, thank city staff across so many departments, Department of Development, City Attorney's Office, Public Safety, Columbus Water and Power, the Auditor's Office, Finance, Recreation and Parks, Public Service, Public Health, and council staff, of course. Everyone's support has been instrumental in allowing this ADU legislation to come to fruition. And I am confident that the feedback that we collected over the past several months has resulted in a historic ADU code for the residents of Columbus. Now, we do know that this legislation is just the first step. More work needs to be done to support homeowners in the building of ADUs so we can continue to have these conversations. Also, it is important to note that this legislation can be amended by the Director of Building and Zoning Services, should there be any unintended consequences as a result of this code change. Now, at this time, I would like to ask Director Messer with the Department of Building and Zoning Services if he has anything that he'd like to add.
Councilmember Beatty, President Harden, other members of council, I'll be brief, but I do want to say that for all the reasons that you mentioned, we're really excited about this legislation that's going to offer the opportunity for accessory dwelling units to be to be, able to be built a lot easier in the city of Columbus. It's going to hopefully be another way that we can continue to address our housing shortfall. We all know that we're sort of in the middle of a major overhaul of our zoning code with Zone In, but these kinds of other changes that we can make more rapidly and quickly show that this is a problem that needs to be addressed today. We're definitely doing long-term, short-term, and medium-term. Anything that we can do to address our housing shortfall, we're committed to that. So, I just want to say thanks to you personally, Councilmember Beatty, your staff, your team, other folks on council, and many of my staff that worked really long and hard to bring this over the finish line tonight, and I'm excited about it. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Director Messer. Next, I will call up Tai Pai, the Manager of Advocacy and Outreach for AARP Ohio, to come to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I am Tai Pai, Manager Outreach and Advocacy for AARP. I am housed here in the, in the Columbus office. So, thank you for having us tonight, President Harden, members of council, all the staff. We appreciate sincerely your hard work. We know it is an important issue for people of all ages. They want to stay and live in their homes. Tonight, we have a video of our State Director, Jenny Carlson. She is out of, out of town and regrets that she could not be here, but I believe there's a video that we taped before she left town to provide testimony.
Good evening, Council President Shannon Harden, Council President Pro Tem Rob Dorans, and Columbus City Council members. My name is Jenny Carlson, and I am the State Director for AARP Ohio. Thank you for the opportunity to share this message today, especially Councilmember Beatty for your leadership advancing this innovative housing solution for our city. AARP is the nation's largest nonprofit, nonpartisan organization dedicated to empowering people fifty and older to choose how they live as they age. Our mission is simple, to make communities more livable for people of all ages, and housing is at the heart of that mission. Ohioans want and need options. According to AARP's twenty-twenty-four Vital Voices Survey, eighty-seven percent of Ohioans aged forty-five and older want to stay in their current homes as they age. Eighty-eight percent want to be able to get to places they need independently, but too many homes and neighborhoods aren't designed for aging residents or for family members who need that extra flexibility, and that's where ADUs come in. ADUs are small houses or apartments built on the same property as a single-family home. They provide independent living quarters, and because they're smaller and more affordable, they offer practical solutions for older adults, caregivers, and family members. So, as it relates to caregiving, in Ohio, twenty-four percent of adults are caregivers, and that's about two-point-two million people are caregivers. One in four older homeowners say they reconsider building an ADU to support their family loved ones. And ADUs can ease the burden by either giving caregivers that flexibilities, or for those who need their cure, a nearby affordable place to live, making care more sustainable and less isolating. And so, this opportunity aligns perfectly with Columbus's commitment as part of that AARP Age Friendly Initiative, which is a pledge to make communities more livable for people of all ages. Supporting ADUs is a concrete way to deliver on that promise. It means creating housing options that are affordable, accessible, adaptable, so residents can age in place and families can stay connected. ADUs are not just about housing, they're about choice, dignity, and community. They're also a way to expand affordable housing choices while creating walkable, age-friendly neighborhoods that are preserved the character of our neighborhoods. As you prepare to vote on this historic ADU code change, we challenge you to explore ways to make implementation successful. Other cities have paired ADU legislation with grants, low-interest loans, tax incentives, technical assistance, and homeowner guidelineship to help residents take advantage of these new options. Charlotte, for example, has developed model plans and streamlined their permitting to make ADUs easier and more affordable to build. And California now gets twenty percent of all new homes for ADU construction. AARP Ohio is not only challenging you, we want to walk with you on that journey. We stand ready to share best practices across the country, and ADUs are affordable, accessible housing solutions that we need now. And on behalf of AARP Ohio and the thousands of older residents and caregivers we represent, we look forward to working with you not only to pass the legislation, but to ensure its success through practical tools and support. Thank you for your consideration and affirmative vote.
Thank you, Council President, and a special thanks to Councilmember Beatty for all of his hard work and leadership, critical issue across the nation and right here in Columbus. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, AARP Ohio. We'll be calling on you as we continue on this journey. And as you know, as many of you know, as I came around and briefed you or went to public meetings, I take this very personal. Again, I have the firsthand experience of how an ADU can change the life of a family. My eighty-eight-year-old mother lives in an ADU at my sister's house in Gehanna, and, you know, I don't know if I'm the first, but I'm sure it doesn't happen very often where a council member drags their mother up on a walker to testify at a hearing. But, that was just to emphasize the point on how this can change the trajectory of a, of a family. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments or concerns at this point?
Not any concerns, no, no. Ladies first.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say congratulations, Councilwoman Beatty. I know that this was something that you were very passionate about. I know that a year to be on council, it sometimes takes a year or two to get things done, and so you've moved this legislation forward, and it is meaningful. I mean, we've talked about this. I think, you know, I purposely moved to be closer to my mom, and I can't think of any way to be closer than if she could have, you know, had an ADU when she was still here with us. But I think for some families, this really is game-changing, for, you know, having an extra income, for taking care of people, for taking care of loved ones, for ensuring that people can age in place and have dignity in doing that, and feel safe, and you have that peace of mind when they are close to you. Or, you know, a family like mine, where, you know, currently I have nieces and nephews that are living with me for a while, right? And I wish we had an ADU. Unfortunately, we have a very full house. But, I think that it's just a testament to what the, the doors of opportunities that this opens up for folks, so I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations.
You're welcome. Just picking up where Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla left off, she said that usually a piece of legislation like this takes a year or two to get done. I, I am so grateful that you, you brought all of your talents and your shoulder and your, I won't take no teness to this process. The truth is, this process, this conversation around ADU started a couple of years ago under Councilmember Faber, first Housing For All Package, and, you know, we were working through it. But when you got your hands on it, you made it stronger, you made it more aggressive, made it much more progressive of legislation, and it will have impact. And a lot of times, land use policy gets so wonky that folks don't really make the connection that it's, at the end of the day, it's about people, and about how they live and how they move, and you just made two things. You, you made it easier for folks to be closer to loved ones. But you also, I, I've been saying, our housing crisis, and I really do believe this, Columbus, is our one, two, and three biggest issue over the next decade. We have more people coming into this community than we have how, units of housing for them, which means your property taxes are going up, it means rents are rising. And the truth of it is, we can't solve it alone up here on this dais. Everybody's going to have to be a part of the solution. We need a new, a Columbus New Deal where you know how you can help out with housing. Now, Councilmember Beatty, with this piece of legislation, now individual homeowners now can be a part of the housing solution. And for that, I'm very grateful. Congratulations, sir.
And with that, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, you're amending, you're amending now? You moved to amend?
Are we amending something?
You're amending?
No.
You're amending? You have an amendment? You're moving to amend? You're amending, that's submitted.
Okay, move to amend that's submitted to the clerk?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer, Dorans Green, Remi Weiss, President Harden.
Amended. I move for passage.
I now move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer, Dorans Green, Remi Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Since it is that week, I just want to let you know, this is the result when you have graduates of the University of Michigan on your council.
Can we call for that vote again? Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll now go back into regular order. The next committee to come before council is the Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Banks, and Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden, and I'm just going to go right and back into business, I don't want to comment on that. Tonight in Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance twenty-seven seventy dash twenty-two-five to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to modify a contract with Granicus LLC for the 311 Response System, One View, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Codes, and to authorize the expenditure of three-hundred-twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-fifty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents from the Information Services Operating Fund. This ordinance authorizes the modification and extension of a contract for annual maintenance and hosting-related costs with Granicus LLC for the 311 Response System. All, as you all know, the Department of Neighborhoods uses 311 to facilitate customer contacts regarding issues and questions. As, this off-the-shelf system is utilized in other communities and provides our 311 Customer Service Center with access to ongoing updates and industry-best practices. This ordinance extends the term of the contract for a period of twelve months, starting on March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, and ending on March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-seven, and adds funds in the amount of three-hundred-twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-fifty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. This agreement also modifies the contract to add four annual renewal options, subject to mutual agreement and approval of proper city authorities and approval by city council. A waiver of competitive bidding is requested due to the established relationship with the contractor and the lack of sufficient time to obtain and award bids before the current contract expires on March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-six. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer, Dorans Green, Remi Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance twenty-nine thirty-eight dash twenty-two-five to make appropriations for the twelve months ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-six, for each of the several object classes for which the city of Columbus has to provide for, from the monies known to be the Treasury of Seid, of Seid, City of Columbus, in the funds known as the General Fund, during the said twelve months, from the collection of all taxes, and from other sources of revenue, the amount of one billion, two-hundred-and-fifty-six-million-eight-hundred-seventy-seven-thousand-sixty-six dollars, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance and the following two ordinances make up the city's operating budget for twenty-twenty-six. I will be referring these back to committee so that council have hearings and deliberations prior to drafting of amendments and a vote for passage. Again, this represents the mayor's proposed budget that he proposed to us, one that is the most historic, but also is very austere in its nature. And we take our role very seriously, and we want to make sure that council holds commensurate hearings to ensure that the budget meets this council's priorities as well as our community's needs. And so, again, we will be having a series of budget hearings through the month of January, and ask that the community engage where they can to ensure that their voices are heard. As I said before in the, in my announcement, our first budget hearing will take place on December eighteenth at three PM here in council chambers. And again, I want to thank my colleagues in advance for all the work that we will do collectively to move this budget forward. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move to refer this ordinance back to committee.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer, Dorans Green, Remi Weiss, President Harden.
Refer to committee.
Thank you. And again, the next two ordinances are companion ordinances to that twenty-twenty-six operating budget. The next ordinance is twenty-nine thirty-nine dash twenty-two-five to make appropriations and transfers for the twelve months ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-six, for other funds for various divisions, to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary, and to declare an emergency. If there's no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move to refer this ordinance back to committee.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer, Dorans Green, Remi Weiss, President Harden.
Refer to committee.
And finally, ordinance twenty-nine forty dash twenty-two-five to make appropriations for the twelve months ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-six, for selected other funds for various divisions, to authorize the auditor, city auditor, to make transfers as may be necessary, and to declare an emergency. I move to refer this ordinance back to committee.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer, Dorans Green, Remi Weiss, President Harden.
Refer back to committee.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance three thirty-oh-eight twenty, dash twenty-two-five to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Department of Technology to assist all general budget reservations resulting from the ordinance with the appropriate purchase agreement with Brown Enterprise Solutions LLC, and approved reseller of Microsoft products for Microsoft enterprise software licensing and true-up costs to appropriate three-million-seven-hundred-forty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents from the unappropriated balance of the General Fund Income Tax Easide Subfund to the Department of Technology to authorize the expenditure of one-hundred-thirty-five-thousand-one-hundred-sixty dollars and seventy-four, four cents from the Municipal Court Judges' General Fund and Municipal Court Computers' Fund Budget to authorize the expenditure of three-million-seven-hundred-forty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents from the General Fund Income Tax Easide Subfund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the true-up of costs related to the city's purchase agreement with Brown Enterprise Solutions LLC for Microsoft Office. Microsoft Office is the city's technology standard for desktop computing software currently used by approximately nine thousand city employees in their daily business. This ordinance will enable the city to obtain the latest versions of Microsoft software, utilizing a single agreement for the entire city. The true-up of costs is the, in this ordinance, a result from price increases associated with upgrading all existing city employees' licenses to old three-sixty-five, Microsoft's cloud-based solution, and increase in the states of Ohio's Microsoft contract from which all licenses and Microsoft enterprise agreements are purchased, and the emergency action is requested so that a purchase order can be issued prior to the city auditor's end-of-year deadline of December twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer, Dorans Green, Remi Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance thirty-two oh five dash twenty-two-five to authorize the city clerk to enter into a service contract with Indiegov Corporation for implementation of a constituent relationship management platform to authorize an expenditure within the General Fund to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Codes and to declare an emergency. This council has selected the Indiegov CRM platform as a solution for the management of constituency engagement. This solution is custom-built for public officials and allows staff and public officials to efficiently triage incoming communications from residents, reply to those messages, and conduct communications and data analysis. Council contracted with Indiegov in twenty-twenty-four for the initial implementation cost of the CRM platform and intends to utilize the Indiegov product. So, a waiver of competitive bidding is requested, emergency action is requested in order to avoid a lapse in the service. Really excited about this piece, this tool, it'll help our director, Mr. Marion Meadows and his team, really be able to engage with our constituents and make sure that we are responding accordingly. So, again, really excited about how we will use this tool to better serve our residents. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? I move for, seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer, Dorans Green, Remi Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance thirty-two twenty-two dash twenty-two-five to authorize the appropriation of Next, we have ordinance 3222-2025 to authorize the appropriation of $35 million in the General Fund Income Tax Easide Subfund to authorize transfers within the Street Construction, Maintenance, and Repair Fund to authorize an expenditure correction in the amount of $20,661,971.86 from the General Fund to the General Fund ITSA Fund to authorize the cancellation of the balance of PO 497173 to Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio in the amount of $6,864,872.77 to reestablish the amount of $6,864,872.77 to SUECO in the General Fund ITSA Subfund to authorize the cancellation of the balance of PO 497824 to Rumpke for Yard Waste and Recycling Services in the amount of $7,473,155.37 to reestablish the amount of $7,473,155.37 to Rumpke in the General Fund ITSA Subfund to authorize the expenditure of $14,338,028.14 from the General Fund ITSA Fund and to declare an emergency. Now, in layman's terms, this ordinance and the next ordinances are companion pieces related to the city's annual third-quarter transfer. Each year, the Department of Finance and Management conducts quarterly financial reviews to track departments' expenditures. As part of the 2025 third-quarter financial review, the Department of Finance has identified budget surpluses and deficits in various categories of expense. In order to properly align budgets with projected expenditures, it is necessary to transfer various funds among divisions within the General Fund and non-General Fund Departments and Divisions. This is a standard financial review process that is conducted every fiscal year, which allows departments to operate without interruption through the end of 2025. This ordinance shifts several expenditures onto our Income Tax Easide Fund and our Street Construction, Maintenance, and Repair Fund, which then provides capacity for the transfers that are in ordinance 3228-2025, which is our typical quarterly transfer ordinance. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Passed.
Next is ordinance 3228-2525 to authorize and direct the city auditor to provide for the transfer of $54,656,908 within the General Fund to transfer $2,245,500 in appropriations between objects in certain non-General Fund Departments and Division to authorize transfers between funds of $7,905.5 to authorize appropriation within the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund, Print and Mail Services Fund, and the Property Management Funds, and to declare an emergency. And as I said before, this is our typical third-quarter transfer that we do. It's basically an accounting move that we do to ensure that our departments continue to have funds necessary through the end of the year. As typical for the City of Columbus, our auditor closes their books early in December to begin that audit process, and so this allows us to have funds in appropriate places so that we can continue the operations of the city through the end of the year. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. May I move to the Economic Development Small Business Committee?
Please.
Thank you. Tonight in the Economic Development Small and Minority Business Committee, for second read, we have ordinance 2580-2025 to amend the 2025 capital improvements budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Development taxable bond fund to authorize the Director of Department of Development to execute a grant agreement with the Columbus Fashion Initiative in an amount up to $1 million to authorize the expenditure of up to $1 million from the Development taxable bond fund to authorize the payment of funds on a predetermined schedule to authorize reimbursement of expenses incurred prior to the purchase order and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes a $1 million capital grant to the Columbus Fashion Initiative, more commonly known as the Columbus Fashion Alliance, for the renovation and construction of their 161 North Grant Avenue location, or fondly known as the loom. The Columbus Fashion Alliance is a local organization that is an integral part of our region's fashion, manufacturing, and innovation identity. These funds will focus on the build-out of office space, meeting rooms, the innovation lab, and other amenities. An emergency designation is requested to ensure there are no delays in construction. And I just want to say that I'm really excited about this particular project. It is really going to anchor a new emerging district in our heart of our city, in our downtown. And the Columbus Fashion Alliance, I think, has demonstrated a strong footing, if you will, in fashion as not just simply something that we wear or something that is an initiative, but fashion as an economic driver for our community and for our region, whether it be through youth programs or working with aspiring entrepreneurs or micro-manufacturing that we're seeing happen there. It's all going to happen right here in Columbus and in our downtown. So I'm really excited to see us get to this point. This is a former building on CCAD's campus, so this really dovetails into a lot of other investments that we've been making in the area. Before I move for passage, I do want to pause and see if there's any comments from my colleagues. I know, Council President, you've been a strong champion of the Fashion Alliance. He thinks he's the most fashionable on council, but we'll go back and forth about that. He's got some fashionable socks, though. I will give him that. Council President.
No, no. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really, your last point, not about my fashion, but about economic development, or fashion being an economic development tool is the most important point. The work that they are doing to create industry as, you know, everybody knows that Columbus is the third, ranks number three in fashion in the country behind New York and Los Angeles. But we also know that the fashion industry, our community is changing, where the big boxes are changing, and we don't want to lose that talent that is based here in Columbus right now. We want them to get the tools, get the resources to be able to start up their own smaller brands and retail. And so I, this is a really smart investment for the City of Columbus to lean into a strong industry that has a thousand little flowers that are ready to bloom. And I think that this, this hub is going to be a critical part of that, so really excited about this.
Absolutely. And thank you again, Council President, to underscore that hub that is happening and what's emerging as the warehouse district in downtown is so critical to that revitalization. Seeing no other further questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 2623-2025 to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Greater Columbus Sports Commission LLC or any affiliate, subsidiaries, or parent corporations thereof, the Board of Commissioners or County Administrator of Franklin County, Ohio, and Pro Volleyball Federation LLC doing business as Major League Volleyball, or any affiliate, subsidiary, or parent corporation thereof, for the purposes of providing support to the Columbus Fury through the Women's in Sports Program of the Greater Columbus Sports Commission in an amount up to $500,000 to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to $500,000 from the Neighborhood Economic Development Fund and to advance funding per a predetermined schedule. As stated in the title, this ordinance establishes a $500,000 grant in support of the Columbus Fury, the city's professional women's volleyball team. I would allow like to pass the mic to Director Stevens, Department of Development, to speak to the purpose of this legislation. Director Stevens, floor is yours.
President Harden, Chair Banks, and members of council. I'll provide a brief overview about what this ordinance tonight authorizes, and then I'll speak to the why we think this is an appropriate investment. Ordinance 2623 provides authorization to enter into a grant agreement where $500,000 will be provided to the Greater Columbus Sports Commission. There'll be a one-time payment to support the Columbus Fury for actual expenses incurred to operate the team. As part of the grant agreement, the team will maintain its home and operations in Columbus through the end of 2030. If that does not occur, the league will refund the grant funds. As to why this is an important economic development investment for the city, historically, the community has successfully supported men's professional sports teams. This investment is forward-thinking and innovative to better position Columbus to benefit from the millions of dollars in consumer spending that will be generated by women's athletics. This is not a long-shot bet. Title IX was enacted 53 years ago, and now we have generations of women who have participated in athletics. They are contributing to the success of our community's businesses and civic institutions. The monopoly of men's professional sports is ending, and it's important that Columbus benefit by leading the way for women's professional sports. Now, a little bit about volleyball. Volleyball is the fastest-growing youth sports for girls in the United States. Approximately 500,000 girls play nationwide. An investment in the Columbus Fury is an investment in our community and a thriving sport. The Fury and Major League Volleyball are at the forefront of providing professional opportunities in the sport, and we're giving fans, especially young girls, role models to support in this community. And finally, from an economic development perspective, the more you activate Nationwide Arena, a community-owned asset, you increase the economic impact in our community. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Just a couple clarifying questions as to underscore something you said. How this is structured is a, is a grant because it's going to the Sports Commission, which I think is a nonprofit. But what you just said is that if the team, for whatever reason, moves, changes ownership or moves, that is to be paid back. So in essence, is this a forgivable loan?
Thank you, Chair Banksman. The document itself that you're authorizing is a grant agreement. The concept behind this is we are helping to fund the operations of the team, and if the team doesn't stay here through 2030, then those dollars are refundable. So you call it a forgivable loan, and then the loan terms will be through the end of 2030.
Got you. But again, if they do intend to, if they do in fact leave, it has to be paid back to us.
Correct.
Got you. Thank you. And then talk to me about the predicament we find ourselves in with the league. Is there a potential for ownership down the road? Is there conversations with the team to ensure, in fact, make sure that they do stay, not just through 2030, but in the city in perpetuity?
Yeah. Thank you for letting me clarify that. The team itself is a league-owned team at this point. The league and community leadership here in Columbus are exploring ways to find a local ownership. Anytime you have local ownership, we know, and we've learned through other experiences, it has a much greater impact on the success of that team. So we're going to continue to not only support the team through this financial grant, but also find ways to support the team and bring partners in our community to the table who could possibly take an ownership role.
Thank you for that. And I know that this is, quite frankly, even something difficult for myself. I see the economic benefits to it, given the challenges that we see on the landscape. But I think we're in a time where we can't push pause on economic development opportunities like this. So one, could you speak to this economic development opportunity and how it helps to aid us in other efforts of how we meet the moment that we currently find ourselves in?
Thank you, Chair Banks. We continue, it seems like every year, there's always a resource-constrained environment. There are a lot of needs in our community, especially our growing community. That is, it's important to meet those needs. But we can do this as well as meet those needs. We can continue to support economic development initiatives, whether it's the Fury or, you know, the great piece of economic development on the ordinance before, on the Fashion Alliance, or is it some of our community partners that are supporting us in the nonprofit world? So there is a, and I think I can go back earlier even to the ordinance around ADUs and the amount of growth that we're experiencing in this community. There are multiple ways for us to make sure we can accommodate that growth and modify or move forward our needs where we can have economic development investment that really has a payback to, and an economic impact to those individuals in our community who benefit from the job opportunities.
Thank you for that. And I know we have several speakers, but are there any questions from my colleagues at this time?
Let the speakers go, then I'll ask some questions.
Okay. Thank you. First, on to speak for this ordinance, we have Bob Suter. And if I mispronounced that, please let me know.
You did.
Suster.
I got it right.
I got it the first time. Okay, all right. Bob, welcome to council. Just state your name and the organization you represent. You have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Bob Suter, and I'm co-owner of Wolfridge Brewing, and thank you for your time this evening. I'm also Commissioner on the Columbus Women's Commission, and I'm here to endorse the ordinance in support of the Women in Sports Program of the Greater Columbus Sports Convention Commission. As a small business in downtown Columbus for the past 13 years, we have seen a lot of change, particularly during and after the pandemic. Throughout those 13 years, the most significant driver to our business is general consumer traffic, as you can imagine. But simply, the more activity downtown, the better we do. With more than 100 employees across our business, this is important to create the sustainable employment we strive for. Supporting activities at places like Nationwide Arena and the Convention Center are absolutely essential for continued success for business like ours. We've always felt that downtown is the cornerstone of the central Ohio community, and it is because of events and activities like these. Additionally, as a Commissioner on the Women's Commission, I strongly believe that the presence of women's professional sports is an important component to the success of women within our community. Specifically, supporting the growth of professional women's sports will show young girls like my daughters here in attendance tonight, that there can be opportunities, and they will be encouraged to engage in and stay in sports. From there, they will better be equipped, they will be better equipped with the life skills and professional skills they need to be successful in any career path they choose. Through that experience, they will be able to hone leadership qualities such as teamwork, collaboration, and resilience, all of which are transferable to any other professional opportunity, particularly leadership in the workplace. To put a finer point on this, 94% of C-suite women executives have played sports. Finally, as a key focus area for us in the work we do within the Commission is the gender pay gap. I believe supporting women's professional sports is a great way to further close that gap. As we know, the success of men's sports is supported by the investments, exposure, and advertising efforts in the industry, which is a common reason given for the pay gap among men and women athletes. Giving the same, giving the same investments to women's sports increases exposure and interest, which in turn increases revenue and pay for women athletes. Closing the gender pay gap in sports is one step towards closing the broader gender pay gap. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Bob, any questions for Mr. Suter? Seeing none, thank you. And just want to just highlight, appreciate you coming down and giving your testimony. I think when we talk about sometimes women's sports or women issues, it's mostly women who are leading the front, as it should be, but we need more allies in men stepping up as well to point out those glaring, I think, disparities that we see in investment and wages for women in professional, in their profession, but also in the sports arena. So thank you for that. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you all.
I finally refer to myself as the Chair of the Men Who Support Women's Caucus here. Next, we have Ms. Letha Pugh, who is with us. And Letha, welcome back to council. You have three minutes, and state your name, of course, and the organization you represent.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Council President Harden, Council, President Pro Tem Dorns, council members and council staff. It's an honor to be here this evening. I cannot believe I am actually here. I have been washing dishes for about eight hours today. This is our Super Bowl at the bakery, so I'm a small business owner. My wife and I have Bake Me Happy with three locations, Preston's Burger, we're opening a second location, Cafe Overlook, and I am also Chair of the Recan Park Commission and Sports Commission. I'm tired. Yes, I'm sorry. But it's an honor to be here with you all this evening to emphasize the incredible opportunity Columbus has to be among the ranks of cities that support, engage, lift up, celebrate, and invest in women and girls in their community, all women's and girl's sports, even when they struggle. I'm here to share my support of the Women and Girls in Sports Initiative and Columbus being home to a professional women's sports team. Women's sports are booming. The WNBA, NWS, they're all joined. They are, they are joined by newer leagues in softball and volleyball, adding to the increasingly large fan bases that follow women's sports. New investments. New investments from major media companies like CBS, ESPN, Amazon, and ABC. Sponsorships are pouring in from blue-chip brands like Nationwide, UPS, Visa, AT&amp;T, and others. This is a movement, not a singular moment. As a former athlete, sports impacted my life for the better. Being involved with sports helped shape my path in more ways than I could even explain in these brief three minutes. I have personally felt like the power, I have personally felt the power of being part of a team. I'm also a small business owner, and I've educated myself about the NIL. I've learned about the inequities in the NIL system for female athletes, and I've stepped into that space and partnered with collegiate female athletes to give them opportunities. I am a fan and supporter of professional women's sports. To have a professional team in our backyard is something other cities are vying for. It's an economic development tool for our community. It drives fandom, it drives a sense of belonging, and it drives additional investments in our community. I support this ordinance and our community's efforts to show our support of women and girls in sports in central Ohio. And when I leave here, I am going to a soccer, I mean, a swim meet tonight for my daughter, who is a multi-sport athlete. I support her, and this gives her an opportunity and is inspiring. Please forgive me, I am super tired, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Leitha. Thank you for everything that you do in our community, and hoping that you stay awake through that swim meet. Next, we have Ms. Linda Logan with the Columbus Sports Commission. Welcome back to council, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Happy Thanksgiving. Good evening, Council President Harden, President Pro Tem Dorrance, Chair Bankston, council members and council staff. My name is Linda Logan. I am the CEO and President of the Greater Columbus Sports Commission. I am providing testimony this evening in support of the ordinance addressing economic development within the Greater Columbus Sports Commission. In Mayor Ginther's 2025 State of the City address, the mayor and Mrs. Ginther announced their aspiration that Columbus become the nation's capital for women's sports. Women's athletics generate millions in consumer spending in our city, but even more important, women's athletics generates confident girls, capable women who contribute to our community's companies and the success of our civic institutions. Mayor Ginther's goals for women in sports is shared by our community. They include keeping young girls and women in sports, growing women's sports fandom, teams and events based and hosted in Columbus, cultivating the next generation of female businesses and civic leaders, and drive innovation in women's sports and investment in sports-related businesses. Our Columbus Women in Sports Initiative is a shared vision to develop and advance women in sports in central Ohio. The Greater Columbus Sports Commission leads a portfolio of women's sports initiatives, and we have a tremendous opportunity to further grow and champion this work in our region. The Columbus Fury have made significant strides in their first two seasons, creating fandom amongst central Ohio residents while Major League Volleyball is committed to community empowerment and inclusivity. Central Ohio has demonstrated the value and support of professional sports in our community. Having a diverse portfolio of both men's and women's professional sports teams opens up our city to more opportunities. By elevating women's sports with the same spirit and investment devoted to men's sports, we open the door to broader opportunity and share prosperity, strengthening our community and helping it lead with vision, fairness, and enduring pride. Supporting this continued success and stability of the Columbus Fury directly advances our community's goals and ambitions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. Thanks for all the work that you're doing at the Sports Commission, whether it be the Women's Final Four that I think is coming back here in...
Twenty twenty-seven?
Twenty twenty-seven.
Yes.
And so many other things. Just appreciate your efforts.
Yes, thank you. We've got the Women's Final Four and the Women's Volleyball NCAA Finals in 2027, so it's going to be a banner year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Logan? Thank you, Ms., thank you. And before I move for passage, any other questions or comments? Council President?
Yeah. I don't have questions for the Director.
Okay, Council President?
No, thank you so much, Councilmember Banksman. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you to the Director and to all of our community advocates. Let me preface my questions and what you will hear as my concern about moving this forward right now is not because of my lack of athleticism, which is true, and certainly not because we don't see the value in supporting women's sports. But when we do, something matters. Timing matters. What we prioritize matters. And so my questioning is around this fund that we're using, Economic Development Fund, that we're using to support this. And too, I'm a huge supporter of economic development, and we do, in the midst of challenging times, still have to do two things at one time. But Director, can you explain to me how we have used this fund in the past? What are some of the uses for this Economic Development Fund?
Yeah, thank you, Council President, members of council. These are non-tax dollars that we have received through either joint Economic Development District agreements that we have in place, revenue-sharing agreements with some of our neighboring communities, and then some fees associated with applying for, whether it's a incentive or a tax increment financing. They're classified as general fund dollars, so they're not restricted in any way through the fund. We call it the Neighborhood Economic Development Fund because that's when the money comes in, where it gets deposited and tracked that way. The money has been used to, I'm going to talk somewhat 25, but historically, we have used some of these dollars to fund staff in the Economic Development Division that do the monitoring and compliance around incentive agreements. So when we come to you every year, if the Tax Incentive Review Council recommendation, there's a team behind that, working with the companies and making sure in their compliance. We've also used these dollars to do American Dream Down Payment Assistance programs. A couple of years ago, Councilmember Reamy brought forward some challenges that we were experiencing in the community for first-time homebuyers in a really challenging housing market. So we pivoted away from the federal dollars we were using and brought some of these non-tax dollars forward to use to down payment assistance, to help people with their housing. We've also used these dollars to support programs like REV One and what they're doing around entrepreneurship and startups. We've used these dollars, specifically this year, one hundred and forty-four thousand go to our Economic Mobility Accelerator Program, where we're providing individual cash, our cash to individuals who are going through different workforce development programs. So, and they're individuals who we call ALIS, so asset limited, income constrained but employed, giving some a little extra cash so they can get through that training and have the ability to seek more opportunity or economic opportunity. We've used this to provide one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the Gladden Community House for their roof. So those are some examples of how those dollars have been used. There's not a steady stream of how these fees and other revenue-sharing funds come in, so it's not budgeted on an annual basis, but we always bring it to city council to appropriate any dollars that we spend out of these funds.
Thank you. And do we know how much is left in this fund? Because I do like the creativity in how we are using this fund, but do we know how much money is left in this fund?
In this fund, right now, we have approximately five million dollars remaining.
Okay. No more questions right now.
Madam Vice Chair.
I just wanted to say, you know, I was torn about this vote because of what, exactly what you said, Council President, thinking about timing. And I think there's two ways that we can look at timing. I think right now, where I feel like on all fronts, women are under attack, it doesn't matter what, if you're playing sports, if you're talking about professional organizations, sororities, if you're talking about the pay gap, whatever it is that we may be talking about. And so I feel like when we think about making a smaller investment in what could be a bigger payout for us as a community, in the end, is what was game-changing for me, especially when we think about who we're talking about, because it's never a good time for women's sports. It's never a good time for women. We pretty consistently have to wait for something. And when I think about what this could open for us in terms of other potential leagues that could be attracted because we are making that investment in women's sports, then this would feel like a big investment, especially when I know that there's a ticket tax, so everybody who should go out and get those volleyball tickets, this goes back into the community, because that's how we are funding, as of now, that's how we are funding both our efforts to get people to come to our city and also how we are funding the arts and how we are doing so much more. And so I think that, for me, that was the tipping point of just thinking about this investment, especially as a mom of two female athletes that, you know, they also have, even my little, almost five-foot goalie has big dreams of what that could look, what her future could look like. And so investing in that, especially, you know, we do efforts like Day of the Girl and other things, and we're talking about the opportunities for girls, the opportunity in sports is one that they often talk about. And so that is, for me, I think what was the game changer in making this investment now, knowing that we are making critical investments in other parts of our infrastructure, people infrastructure, as Councilmember Green often says, and in our organizations, and that this council is committed to continuing to do that.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues?
Chair.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, President Pro Tem Dorrance.
Thank you, Chair. And I appreciate those comments, Councilmember. I think that is the heartburn that I have here tonight as well, when we think about the investments that the city has made in so many different sports ventures, and so many of those have been focused on men. And here tonight, we have one that is focused on women, and rightfully so, and something that I think we all want to be very supportive of. I think the difficulty for me is getting back to what the Council President said, is that timing aspect here. We refer back here tonight, one of the tightest budget I have ever seen during my time on council, and we're going to have to make a lot of really tough choices over the coming months. And I think we need to evaluate everything that comes before us in the aspect of how do we provide for residents during this incredibly difficult time as we think through what we can do in that budget. And ultimately, that's why tonight I'm not going to be voting in favor of this legislation, which, again, there's a pit in my stomach about that, but I think we as a body need to be very straight up with the community about where we're at and where this budget is headed and why we need to be laser-focused on our people right now. Thanks.
Can I say something? I think that building off of what Press Pro Tem just said, it's not the what we are talking about. It literally is the timeframe in which this conversation is happening. We, as a council, and we, truthfully, as a city, have been so blessed over the last several years that our job has been to look at our friends and tell many of them, yes, yes, yes. Many councils have not had the luxury, many administrations have not had the luxury of governing that way. Last week, to Press Pro Tem's point, the mayor presented us the tightest budget that I have seen, and now I am the geriatric member of this council. And which means that we are going to have to start, we're going to have to start telling our friends no. I'm looking out, I see Pastor Davis out here. A few months when this summer comes around and we are used to funding a whole bunch of different youth groups and working with churches, we're going to have to say no. See, my friend Leitha is here, and the budget that was presented to us did not support some of our Southside Thrive initiatives. We know that in this budget, we have to see fewer resources go into public safety. To me, absurdity is not in the doing the thing, it's the timing in which we would bring this forward, when we have so much need out there and so many future no's, future no's. The line of human service organizations, the no's that we're going to have to give to the YMCA, the no's that we're going to have to give to the shelter system because we can't do warming centers. It's going to be a long line of no's. And for me, this is just too hard to reconcile in this moment, as we go through the budgeting process. Over the next several weeks, and we are unpacking this budget, and we're looking to tell our friends who we want to say yes to, no. It would sit too heavy on me that tonight I would say a yes, when some of those other no's will be so, so heavy. And our, one thing that we may have, and folks that follow how we go through budget processes, is that after the end of the year, maybe we will have more carryover, and maybe we will be able to find some yeses then. But I don't know that. And so for me, the issue is not, again, what we are considering, it's the when we are considering it. Before we even know what real no's we will have to say come January 1st, when we see how we close this out. And so that's why I'm a no, because it, to me, the timing seems absurd, that we would step out there right now, when we have so many pressing issues, too many friends, too many friends, that we will be telling no, and that tonight we might say yes. That doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you, Council President. And before I move for passage, absolutely understand those sentiments and agree with them wholeheartedly. And I think that what has gotten me to this point, to even get this on the agenda and to move forward, is that there will never be a good time for it. There's always going to be, I think, a tough time of hard decisions that we have to make. And I do believe that we can do both. We've demonstrated that we can do both. It is at your direction, Council President, that we got, that we moved this community from twenty-five thousand dollars to the Mid-Ohio Food Collective to over five hundred thousand that we found as a city, and now that is a movement that is going on to make sure that our friends and neighbors were fed. I know that, working with the Department of Development, that there's millions of dollars that we are going to find to make sure that warming centers happen this year, or the collective effort that we are doing around the Financial Review Advisory Committee to find those long-term solutions. And so, yes, I understand that any time that we bring this forward, particularly in times that we are in, would be a hard one, but I would challenge us and say that we can do both. We've demonstrated that we can do both, and we must do both to move our community forward. So it is not a lightweight that we take this evening as a council, and I'm sure a divided one. But as we go through this budget cycle, I'm sure that we will step up to the plate to make sure that we continue to invest in our people, continue to make investments like this that then contribute more to the revenue sources that are necessary to contribute to our people. And with that, I move for passage.
Click. Please call the row by voice.
Bankston?
Yes.
Borosa De Padilla?
Yes.
Beatty?
No.
Dayak Howard?
Yes.
Dorrance?
No.
Green?
No.
Reamy?
Yes.
Wyche?
Yes.
President Harden?
No. Ordnance pass.
Thank you. Next, we have Ordinance 3006-2025 to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Columbus Downtown Development Corporation in an amount up to two million dollars to authorize the expenditure of five hundred thousand from the general fund to authorize the appropriation, and expenditure of up to one million five hundred thousand dollars from the Housing Business Tax Incentive Fund to allow for the reimbursement of expenses incurred prior to the creation of the purchase order, but in no event earlier than September 1, 2025, to allow for advancement of grant funds on a predetermined schedule and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes a grant to Downtown Columbus, Inc., formerly known as the Columbus Downtown Development Corporation. This is an annual contribution that we make to DCI to aid in our downtown redevelopment efforts and also our strategic plan. This city, the city operating funds also to DCI are for annual need funds that will go forward towards anticipated operating costs for 2026. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Click. Please call the row.
Bankston, Borosa De Padilla, Beatty, Dayak Howard? Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorans, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
I don't have any.
Go back. Call it by voice.
May I?
Bangston.
Reconsider?
No, no, just go ahead. I didn't call it. Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Bangston.
Yes.
Barrosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
De Akauer.
Yes.
Dorans.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Remy.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, ordinance is passed.
Thank you. And now, lastly, Council President, may I move to page 21 of our agenda for the Rules and Reference Committee?
Please.
Uh, thank you. Tonight, in Rules and Reference, I am sponsoring ordinance 2925-2025 to amend Chapter 329 of Columbus City Code to authorize food and/or non-alcoholic beverage expenditures incurred during defined contract period terms as part of standard operating costs for nonprofit organizations serving vulnerable populations. The overall purpose of this code change is quite simple, just to give the city additional financial flexibility to support organizations serving food and secure populations by amending Chapter 329 of the city code. Director Stevens, is there anything that you want to add to this ordinance?
Uh, thank you, Chair Bangston. I have nothing to add, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that. It's really just a cleanup. I mean, this is organizations like the Mid-Ohio Food Collective and other folks that have already purchased food, that we're allowing them to be able to go back and have that flexibility to do that. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorans, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. So I'll have my committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there a motion to recess for zoning?
Yes.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorans, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
We are in recess.
Number fifty-eight will now come to order. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akaua, Dorance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Can I get a motion dismissed with the reading of the Journal?
No move, second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akaua, Dorance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Hearing no additions, the Journal is approved. This, uh, we will now go to the zoning committee, council member Dorance, chairs that committee, all members, everyone, and councilman, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. As always, before we begin tonight's agenda, allow me to briefly explain our rules pertaining speaking for council on rezonings and variances. We only hear a staff presentation for ordinance that have a disapproval from recommending body, or if we have a public speaker decide to speak against an ordinance. We permit three speakers on each side of an ordinance, three proponents, three opponents. We ask those speakers to limit their remarks to three minutes per the standard rules of City Council. All speakers in the council variance, including city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives of the area commission are always able to speak in an ordinance and do not need to fill out a speaker slip, but you, we do ask you to alert your, uh, city staff of your intentions to speak at this committee hearing. Uh, we do have three, uh, public speaker slips, uh, this evening, in addition to, uh, folks from an area commission. On the vice city attorney's office will now swear in city staff, please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear affirm the test we are about to give? Shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under pain or penalty perjury, so please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Tim Dietrich in the Department of Building and Zoning Services, Chris Lohr from the Division of Planning, Dan Bleschman from the Division of Traffic Management, and the Department of Public Service, Deputy Director for Housing Strategy, Aaron Prosser from the Department of Development, and Bradley Westall from Recreation and Parks Department have been sworn in. First ordinance we have is, uh, ordinance number one nine seven nine dash twenty twenty-five, uh, to rezone four nine seven zero Lindora Drive, being point, uh, nine-two-plus acres located in the southeast corner of Lindora Drive and Carbondale Drive, from C four Commercial District to L A AR one Limited Apartment Residential District. Site consists of one undeveloped parcel, and requested rezoning will allow for a twenty-unit apartment building. The concurrent council variance included in this project will be considered, uh, indexed on our agenda. Uh, the proposal has approvals from city staff, the Development Commission, but a disapproval from the Greater Southeast Area Commission. Due to that disapproval, we will now hear a staff report from, from the city staff, starting with Mr. Tim Dietrich in the Department of Buildings and Zoning Services. Floor is yours, sir.
Chair Dorance, President Harden, members of council, the zero-point-nine-two-acre site consists of one undeveloped parcel in the C four Commercial District. The applicant requests the L AR one Limited Apartment Residential District to allow for the development of a twenty-unit apartment building. North and west of the site are single-unit dwellings in the S R Suburban Residential District. East is privately-owned parkland in the C four Commercial District, and the City of Columbus Park in the S R Suburban Residential District. South of the site are commercial uses in the C four District. The limitation text restricts the number of dwelling units to twenty within the proposed apartment building, and includes supplemental development standards, addressing building height, parking and building setbacks, traffic access, landscaping and screening, building materials, and a commitment to develop the site in accordance with the submitted site plan. Concurrent council variance CV twenty-four dash zero seventy-five has been filed to reduce landscaping requirements and the required parking setback from Lindora Avenue. That request will be heard later on tonight's zoning agenda. The requested L AR one Limited Apartment Residential District will allow a two-story, twenty-unit apartment building that is consistent with the southeast land use plans, land use recommendation and design guidelines. The proposal is also consistent with the city's objectives of providing more housing in all areas of the city. Staff notes that the current zoning at this location is an unrestricted C four Commercial District with a height limit of thirty-five feet. An unrestricted C four District such as this location can be developed with a three-story mixed-use building with commercial uses on the first floor, and one or two residential unit, res, one or two residential floors above. The C four District does not have a residential density limit and allows all but a handful of commercial uses. The requested L AR one District represents a less intense and smaller-scale development than what is currently allowed by right at this location, and therefore, City Department's recommendation is for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Um, just want to, uh, ask a question specifically about, so oftentimes, we're going from one zoning district to another. It's because an applicant is requesting, um, that rezoning to allow a higher intensity use of that site. Here in this situation, this is actually sort of the reverse, right? Where actually, the rezoning request, uh, actually applies more limitations, uh, based upon the sort of scale and scope, and sort of size of the project compared to what the C four, uh, current zoning district would allow. Is, is that fair?
Yeah, in this situation, that is correct.
And when we talk about, um, that additional, you know, that commercial space, there's not like a, um, in the current district, there's not like a limitation on what could go there, as long as it fits sort of that commercial use. So everything from, you know, something that folks may really like, like a pizza shop, uh, all the way to things like a smoke shop that maybe folks wouldn't like, those things would be permissible within that C four?
Correct. There's a handful of commercial uses such as, uh, car wash, gas station, that would not be allowed, but all other commercial uses of this location would be permitted today.
And again, just to be very clear, so currently with C four zoning, you could build residential on this, again, with that, uh, sort of additional commercial use?
That's correct. They could be on the second and third floor in this instance.
Okay, thank you. Want to, um, then move to, uh, Christopher Longford, our Division of Planning, um, regarding their report. Mr. Long, floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Dorance, President Harden, and members of council. Planning supports the proposed use of this property. Uh, the southeast land use plan, as mentioned, recommends mixed use one, which allows for a density up to twenty-four units per acre. The proposal is consistent with this recommendation, and therefore, planning is in support. Comments regarding the design of the site, uh, I will reserve for the council variance portion. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, thank you, Mr. Lohr. Um, next we have from the Division of Traffic Management, Mr. Dan Bleschman.
Thank you, Chair Dorance, President Harden, members of council. The Division of Traffic Management has reviewed the proposed site layout and is supportive of the access and parking configuration for this site to be limited to one access point to Lindora Drive. Additionally, coordination has occurred with the Division of Refuge Collection related to the proposed dumpster and bulk storage areas to confirm that the site layout would permit City of Columbus Refuge Collection services to be provided to this proposed area of development. With these comments noted, the Department of Public Service is in support of this application, and I would be happy to answer any further questions. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bleschman, there is no, uh, parking variance associated with this application, correct?
No, was, that, that is, that is correct.
Thank you. I'll, uh, pause and see if, uh, council colleagues have any questions for the department after our last presentation, if folks have any. So next, we'll go with, uh, Deputy Director for Housing Strategies, Ms. Erin Prosser.
Thank you, Chair Dorance, President Harden, members of council. The proposed rezoning of forty-nine seventy Lindora Drive in the Eastland Neighborhood supports the Columbus Housing Strategy by expanding housing options in an area experiencing change. The new units will relieve the pressure on the overall market and allow for more options for residents in the area, slowing the growth in rents and home prices, and the conversion of single-family homes into rentals. Median home values in the census track rose fifty-three-point-five percent from October of last year to October twenty-twenty-five, and rents rose more than six percent, which indicates a high-demand area in need of additional housing to slow the growth in housing cost. A study this year from the Cleveland Federal Reserve identified this area of Columbus as this, as a single-family home investor hotspot. Additional rentals in the area will alleviate the pressure on existing single-family homes to meet the rental demand. There are currently twenty-one single-family homes for rent in the zip code with an average rent of eighteen-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars per month, which is twenty-two-point-six percent higher than the median rent for the City of Columbus. And as noted in the Eastland Housing and Technical and Retail Technical Analysis, forty-seven percent of renters and twenty-two percent of homeowners are housing cost-burdened. The twenty percent of rent, twenty percent of renters are severely housing cost-burdened, meaning they're paying more than fifty percent of their income on their housing. Adding more diverse range of housing types and affordability levels will help provide current and future residents with more housing choice while easing cost burden and other challenges. With housing scarcity in a high-opportunity area comes the threat of displacement of existing residents and the limited options for new families in the area. New jobs are coming to central Ohio, and in particular, to the east and southeast portion of the region. It's forecasted and roll will create approximately four thousand direct jobs and forty-five-hundred indirect jobs. The new Honda EV plant will create another twenty-two-hundred jobs, and employers like Amgen and Intel will add thousands more jobs in the area. Those employers, employees will need a place to call home, and they are likely to consider the Eastland area making more housing, making housing more competitive and therefore more expensive. And while housing scarcity will drive up housing prices throughout the region, in these locations with expanding access to jobs, education, services, and amenities, we expect to see accelerated housing pressure as the market responds. Therefore, adding new housing in this neighborhood will be critical to ensuring household stability of the current residents, as well as continued access for new families. Thank you, and I'll feel free to, I'll be able to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Prosser. I do want to, um, well, we'll do questions after we get to recreation parks, if that's okay, my colleagues. Um, we do have Bradley Westall here from the, uh, Department of Recreation Parks, and I want to put a little context about why I asked Brad to be here tonight was, um, this project actually came before the rezoning committee earlier this summer. One of the concerns and questions from the area commission was, uh, there's a nearby park and sort of the desire to explore the expansion of that park with this parcel. Um, so we actually tabled this legislation to allow, uh, those discussions to happen, um, which I think was the right thing to do. Uh, there's no reason, at that point, we had a hard deadline or anything, so we wanted to make sure that the community had an opportunity to engage with, with the Recreation Parks Department, the, uh, the department had the opportunity to engage with the area commission, and then ultimately, the property owner as well. So I wanted to ask Mr. Westall here, because ultimately, uh, that engagement did not work out, um, in acquiring this parcel for, uh, parkland expansion. So, Mr. Westall, can you just talk a little bit about sort of that process that you and folks engaged in here, um, ultimately, again, at the request of both the area commission and certainly council, uh, around this project?
Yes, thank you, Council Member Dorance and Council President Harden. Um, we were aware from the community that this parcel, uh, was going to be potentially rezoned for apartment use, and we were asked to, um, investigate if we could potentially acquire this. We didn't have a budget or a plan for the parcel, however, we did want to look into that, um, to be responsible to, uh, the community. Uh, we looked, um, number one, at what was available around, this is Mayberry Park that we're speaking about, what was around there, how big it is, uh, you know, sort of put a plan together as to what, what the future of that small community park might be. Um, and we also looked, uh, deep, uh, deeply into this particular parcel and owner, um, who had brought, uh, this rezoning before, uh, council tonight. Um, we contacted the owner in July, August, and September of this year to see what if possibilities might be to acquire that site, um, what was the value of it, and what would be potentially an asking price, or, um, what it would take. Uh, again, we don't have a budget for that, but we, uh, we felt an obligation to the community to at least attempt to pursue that. We were unable, though, to come to any, um, potential deal that the owner was willing to, uh, they wanted to move forward with this project, and we understand that. So, uh, we're here tonight to say we were unsuccessful for that.
So, just to clarify, did, did the department, Flash of the City, make a, make an actual offer from a financial standpoint of here's what we'd be willing to pay? And did the, did the applicant who's here today, uh, respond to that?
Yes, we did make an offer, and the applicant did consider it and wanted, uh, a much higher value for the property than, uh, we could sustain through appraisal or, uh, any means to study its value.
And, Mr. Westall, one of the, um, I think, from, from my vantage point, one of the tricky things about this is that this parcel is not contiguous to the existing Recreation and Parks property, is that correct? There's a parcel in between, so can the sort of connectivity of those two parcels would, you know, essentially be blocked because of that, uh, that land in between?
Uh, Council Member Dorance, that's correct. It's not directly adjacent. There's a two-and-a-half to, I believe, three-acre parcel, uh, in between Mayberry Park and there, um, which we are pursuing. Um, we, we aren't going to, uh, turn our back on that potential as well, because those that are adjacent to the park offer immediate benefits for the community and for our system at large, but it does not.
Thank you. Uh, want to pause and see what if any questions my council colleagues have for any of the city departments at this time? Councilman Bangston?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just to clarify, I think this may be to building and zoning and just reading over the fact sheet. Currently, the parcel can go actually higher, right, to twenty-four units? I think it's mixed use. Does, the code specify how much square footage needs to actually be commercial, or anything like that? I'm just trying to understand that.
Um, no, the code does specify, though, that it has to be above commercial uses in this case, so the first floor would have to be commercial in nature, and then the subsequent, uh, uses above could be residential. In this case, there isn't, um, a density calculation or minimum size for this district. So theoretically, though, you would have to consider things like setbacks and parking to kind of see what the maximum this site would be, but right now, it could be a three-story building with commercial on the first floor and two stories of apartments. Um, and that's what it exists as today.
And is there height restrictions? So for instance, if I was to do commercial, I could...
So it's in a H thirty-five, which is a thirty-five-foot height district at this location?
Got it. But again, as the code says, that there's not a, it doesn't define what that square footage is or what that use is, so as is, I could still build this twenty-unit building if I added, I don't know, fifteen-hundred, two-thousand square feet of commercial on the floor, that potentially also could just sit empty.
It would have to be the entire first floor, though.
Got it.
So, or you would need a, a used council variance to have ground floor residential.
Got it, but it could just sit empty as well.
It could.
Got it, thank you.
Uh, other questions from council members for the departments this time? Seeing none, I will invite the applicant representative, Dave Perry, uh, for representation. Mr. Perry, welcome back to council.
Good evening, President Harden and zoning Chair Harden, uh, excuse me, zoning Chair Dorance and all council members. My name is Dave Perry. I am the agent for the applicant for this rezoning, Tejan LLC. Just a bit of history first. You've, you've covered, uh, many things on this, Councilman Dorance, but a little, little bit of history I'd like to give the council. The, uh, point-nine-two-acre site was, uh, rezoned to C four in nineteen sixty-three, and then platted as part of the Walnut Bluff subdivision. The plat included a total of about five-point-four acres of commercial area, of which two-point-seven is used as an intermittent temporary parking lot by the Athletic Association. Point-nine-two is a subject site, and the remainder, about one-point-eight, has a couple small commercial buildings. In nineteen seventy-one, the subject site, the point-nine-two acres, was developed with a gas station. At that time, gas stations were uses of the C four rather than subsequently in the C five. Um, it is my understanding that Nobixby Road was relocated at some point in the seventies, and a gas station that was built on, on an arterial, Nobixby Road, on a corner parcel suddenly was not. And so I've, I've researched aerial photography. There isn't photography available for every single year, but by nineteen eighty-three, the gas station was gone. And by gone, I don't mean closed, I mean gone, removed from the site. So the gas station became, uh, unviable at the property and was closed and removed. So, a little bit on the math, so, so for forty-two years, approximately, depending on the exact removal date, commercial, a commercial use could have occurred for the last forty-two years on this property. It's been vacant, and there have been no takers for the commercial use. It's been vacant, it's been, uh, zone C four, but, uh, no interest for the commercial development. I think this speaks to the viability of commercial uses at this, this location. And now with the relocation of Nobixby Road, this site is about sixteen-hundred feet east of Nobixby Road. It is very internal to the subdivision. In terms of the application, um, I was not involved with this application initially. When I, when I became involved, um, I was surprised at the disapproval recommendation from the area commission. I've been to the Greater Southeast Area Commission numerous times on zoning applications over the years, and I requested a conference call with, um, a couple of the officers. On that call, we, we briefly discussed, discussed the application and the development, but I was informed on that call that there was nothing, absolutely nothing, that could be changed on this application that would make it acceptable. There were, um, between, between that call and then the subsequent Development Commission hearing, there were reasons of, um, traffic's a problem, and they don't want apartments at all, an effect on property values, and, um, potential crime increase and so on due to, due to a few apartments. But the interesting thing that the council has already talked about is that apartments can occur here anyway, under the C four zoning. So this proposal is, is really a form of building, uh, proposal, as opposed to whether there can be apartments there or not. And the, the sole issue on the zoning is the ground-level residential use rather than ground-level commercial use. If there was a ground-level commercial use under the whole footprint of the building, um, this would likely be three stories with two stories of apartments and ground-level commercial uses of, I don't know what, because we don't, we don't feel, the, the project team doesn't feel that the commercial uses are viable at the site for the reasons I stated and other reasons. When I became involved, I changed the application from AR one to limited AR one. The limitation text mechanism in the city code is a, is a good mechanism for memorializing commitments being made with the zoning. And that, in fact, is what has happened with the development standards and site plan commitment that is, has been made. This, um, the, the housing in the subdivision is characterized as being one and two-story. And, um, the architects for this project were very aware of that and did not seek to, did not want to go to three-story, and were trying to keep the height of the building down, so that, that building, the building was designed as two-story with a flat roof. So we got to the Development Commission, and, um, there's three, three architects on the Development Commission, and they said, you know, um, we're good with a little more, a little more height, because you need a pitched roof on this building, because all, all the surrounding houses have a pitched roof. So the request, uh, made of me, it wasn't a condition of their action, but the request made of me was, please have the project architects look at, uh, getting a pitched roof on the building, and as I said about memorializing commitments, this limitation text requires the pitched roof. And the height went up a small, a small amount, a couple feet. This has been to the Development Commission. Development Commission supports this, the request, and several of the members noted that it is a down zoning from the C four. It is. Uh, city staff supports the project, with the planning staff noting the project is consistent with the Southeast Area Plan and C two P two. Planning staff has reviewed the building renderings. And I would also say, while, while this is not in zone-in yet, um, that this is, um, it, it will be in time as, as the city staff and the council gets to additional areas of zone-in, uh, that this, this proposal is consistent with the, with concepts of zone-in, with, with, um, mixed uses and, and other, and providing housing and other aspects of concepts of zone-in. So since the Development Commission, uh, there has been the discussion of parkland. Uh, this point-nine-two acres is not contiguous to the city park, so there was, there was that issue with the Parks Department. Um, and then also, as other members of the project team worked more specifically on floor plans and project budgets and so on, the building was reduced from twenty-two units to twenty units. And one of the things, one of the things about that is, uh... one of the things, one of the things about that is, as you all know, parking is charged per unit in the zoning code, and that reduction in two units removes the need to have a parking variance. We were a couple or three spaces short. And I said to the project team, don't take away those spaces. Leave them. Because one of the other points made by neighbors or commissioners was, we don't want apartment dwellers parking on public streets. We don't want them in front of our house. And I know you hear that periodically. But I said, leave the parking. So, not only is there not a parking variance, this is a couple spaces over the minimum code record parking. So, the land use relationships, the land use relationships with this proposal of apartment, single-family, commercial uses occurs all over the city. This is not unusual in terms of the land use relationships. And, you know, I would ask you to think about, this is a, this construction project is, pricing will be finalized, of course, but this construction project is in the $3.5 million to $4 million range on a project that has been undeveloped for 42 years. And the real zoning issue is just one of form of where the housing occurs.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Any questions from my council colleagues for the applicant representative this time? Seeing none. Dave, I'll invite you back up after we have our public speakers.
Certainly.
As I mentioned, we do have folks from the Southeast, Greater Southeast Area Commission with us. So, we have both Commissioners Angela Barnes and Mark Harper, and I think Commissioner Harper is planning to speak to this. Thank you both for being here. Welcome back to council.
All right. I got everything here. Cool. Good evening, Chair Dorans, honorable members of the zoning committee and city staff. As Chair Dorans stated, my name is Mark Harper, and I serve as the vice chair and zoning chair for the Greater Southeast Area Commission. I rise tonight with the support of my colleagues, our residents, and our Greater Eastside Coalition partners, the Far East and Mideast Area Commissions. The Greater Southeast Area Commission and Walnut Heights neighborhood have been working through this zoning application since last September, which was approximately one year after the applicant had purchased this property. It sparked two of the most well-attended meetings in our commission's 10-year history, and one, and has resulted in one of the very rare instances of us actually having to show up to a zoning committee meeting here at council. Those two meetings, those meetings had over 100 residents from the immediate area packed into Gassimity United Methodist Church, which is right next door to the park that is adjacent to this parcel in question. I think, basically, we nearly hit fire code, but the number also indicates that our community showed up in force to say a resounding no to this development. The reasons were diverse: safety concerns, increased traffic, and the applicant's ongoing failure to maintain their properties. Some might call it nimbyism, but what we found was not really nimbyism. We heard a desire to preserve the green space or pursue strategic and thoughtful small-business-style commercial development to support the community that already exists. The applicant's attorneys may argue commercial use isn't feasible, but the neighbors, our housing and population growth, and the longstanding businesses in Lindora Plaza say otherwise. After hours of community feedback, the developer returned with a slightly revised plan that removed just one unit, added an office space for local organizations, and vaguely promised some donations for park upgrades. As of today, we see that that plan is now a 20-unit development, in which we were not made aware of until slightly before it actually came earlier this year before council. But the community sentiment has remained unchanged. This proposal still runs counter to the values and vision laid out in our Southeast Land Use Plan and the Eastland for Everyone Community Plan. We, as a commission, also believe that this rezoning request failed to meet the following Duncan criteria used to evaluate zoning changes. Regarding the impact on surrounding properties, these apartments would disrupt the character of a stable, single-family neighborhood and community resource node. This parcel has also been, long been zoned for commercial use and remains suitable for that or for green spaces, we identified with the mixed-use category that we'd fought for when devising the Southeast Land Use Plan with the city. We also know that there are many other parcels better suited and available for dense housing within the surrounding areas, especially on our main corridors. It is also consistent with our comprehensive Eastland for Everyone Plan, which designates this area for a community-focused, lower-density uses. Now, I'm not for sure if you've seen this, but this book, which represents a million-dollar plan and the voices of over 1,800 residents, calls for strengthening connections with our surrounding uses, adding seating and a shelter near the play area at Mayberry Park, incorporating fitness stations along the walking trail, keeping our flexible lawn spaces, and considering also gazebos, as well as encouraging neighborhood-led programming. But I want to emphasize this last point, that this plan also calls for expanding the Lindora Plaza into a vibrant neighborhood node. Imagine what that could look like in this area: outdoor dining, a community event space, maybe even a stage for food trucks. We could have permanent picnic tables under an open-air shelter, landscaping with a community or pollinator garden. That's the kind of amenities and uses our community supports, development that brings people together, because that's the purpose of a neighborhood node. But we also believe that this vision that we are outlining aligns with Mayor Ginther's opportunity-rising priorities. We know that safe and resilient communities require infrastructure and green spaces in each neighborhood to support healthy living. We know that youth engagement is supported by providing young people with safe, engaging spaces during out-of-school hours. We know that community collaboration allows residents to participate in shaping their neighborhoods. The Eastland for Everyone Plan was developed as a part of this process. The developer was not involved in that plan or our community until it came time for us to actually hear this application. We also know that the community's health and well-being is promoted when health-oriented spaces like parks are easily accessible and affordable for all. Increasing the value of this parcel through this type of development will lead to higher surrounding property values, potentially resulting in increased property taxes and affecting housing affordability, especially for the immediate aging population. And we also know that the climate resilience ensures residents benefit from a sustainable environment, and the reduction of green space will unpack this goal. Even though this is less than an acre, every small step has a big difference in the long term, whether we see it or not. But I also want to make this point clear as well. Our area commission is not anti-development. In fact, the Greater Southeast area is actively growing and preparing for even more growth in the years ahead. Over the next five years, we anticipate being home to more than 5,000 new housing units. Since 2020, we've become home to 1,750 units along Ginder Road. 439 units are currently under construction on Bixby, with 2,000 more plant between Bixby and Winchester Pike, 300-plus units near the Black Creek Trail and Shannon Road, with 1,000 more coming at Bryce and Shannon. We built 500 units already built in Abbey Trails, and 1,000 units completed near Chatterton and Bryce Road, with a handful of more townhomes currently completed. Most recently, since this application was supposed to be originally heard, we've had two separate senior housing projects that are totaling roughly 150 to 200 units. And with nearly 400 acres of land currently for sale within a four radial miles nearby, we expect, and I'm almost guaranteeing that we're going to see thousands or more units likely on the horizon. And so, this notion is in speculation. It's a clear signal that our community is open to smart, sustainable growth. We welcome development that aligns with our values and meets the needs of both current and future residents. As I said, we're not nimby's just saying no to apartments just to say no to apartments. We're neighbors, we're planners, we're volunteers. We wake up every day trying to improve the quality of life for our residents with no pay, no direct staff outside of our liaison, and little to no recognition. And we do it with pride. We woke up today knowing that this site has been a community gathering space for decades, and we stand here tonight to fight to keep it that way and make it a community gathering space for decades to come. With that, Chair Dorans, honorable members of this committee, the Greater Southeast Area Commission, as long as our partners, the Mideast Area and the Far East Area, which we are representing approximately 150,000 residents and 40-plus square miles of the city of Columbus, are strongly urging you to vote no on this rezoning application. A yes vote would not only rubber stamp this development, but also against the plan that we spent 16, 18 months developing with our community. And so, we want you to let us fulfill the vision that's laid out in this Eastland for Everyone Plan and Mayor Ginther's Opportunity Rising Initiative, a vision that this city and this body has applauded and endorsed. And with that, I would thank you for your time and your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I always hesitate in speaking on behalf of my colleagues, but I think I can in this instance. I don't think anyone up here has ever thought of the Greater Southeast Area Commission as being primarily driven by nimbyism or anything like that, anything like that, to your comments. I think you all have a track record of working with folks, particularly on housing. And, you know, I know I've talked to both of you on a number of occasions about the recognition of the need for more housing and sort of what that looks like across Columbus. So, I appreciate you bringing it up, but I think the folks up here know that, you know, in opposition to an individual project is not a holistic one, to say no to, like, everything that's coming before you. And I think that, I just want the both of you to know, and certainly the rest of the commissioners, that you all have a, certainly have had and enjoy a very strong reputation from a credibility standpoint of just trying to work through these processes with folks over time. So, you know, appreciate the service that you both have given to your neighborhoods and certainly will continue to do so in the future. I want to pause and see if any of my council colleagues have any questions for the area commission this time.
I did have one thing to say. I just don't want to see, with all the housing that we have approved, and all of the participation that this commission has participated in with the growth of the city, all of the meetings I've gone to with zone-in, and what our city wants to see, one of the biggest concerns is going against the community and what they want because we wrote a zone-in, or because zone-in is needed, or because people need housing. If no one has never been to this area, if none of you've driven by that area, come to that area. If you've never, to me, before you make a decision on any zoning application, especially when the commission is telling you what we think is best for our area, we invite you to get in your car and come and walk the area, and come and see what we're talking about. So, if no one's done that, I hope that you won't allow 20 units out of the thousands of units that we've approved be the difference between why people in the city of Columbus want to trust city council. We want to trust that you guys are going to make the best decision for our neighborhoods based on our advice. Otherwise, why do we exist? So, that's just all I have to say. And I think Mark has really put together, the first day they had this, I wasn't in town, so I wanted to let him continue to lead it in the best way that he could. And I think he's done an excellent job of explaining why this information, I mean, why this area means so much to this community, and why this doesn't fit in this community. So, thank you very much, everyone of you, for listening to us.
Chair, are there other speakers?
We have two additional public speakers on this ordinance. Sure. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. As I mentioned, we have two public speakers signed to speak on this ordinance as well. We have, the first is Mr. Douglas Hatcher. Mr. Hatcher, welcome to council.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to address you all this evening. As a resident of Walnut Heights, I have been torn by this since the beginning. What really bothers me the most isn't the idea of having apartments and buildings put in, but it's the developer himself who already doesn't care for the property that he owns. At every single meeting, we have brought pictures. We have talked about the trash that's on the property, the overgrown trees. It takes me, for example, at a meeting like this to point out that he's got parts of his trees blocking sidewalks again. What's easier to take care of, an empty lot or a building? We're expecting him to maintain this building that he can't even maintain the lot with. I would rather see the mixed use go in, because those businesses downstairs are going to take care of the property that he refuses to address. They're going to have, they're going to take pride in their business. They're going to make sure that parking lot is clean. They're going to make sure their front windows are washed. They're going to make sure that their areas are swept, because they want us to come in. We're told by this group of developers that businesses can't survive there. Yet, we have a parking lot right next door that has surviving businesses. They tell us that if we let the businesses come in, it's going to be a pawn shop. It's going to be a smoke shop. You know what? Give us the pawn shop. Give us the smoke shop. At least they'll maintain what's downstairs, and the residents upstairs will have a better place to live. My only last suggestion on the whole thing is I think the property needs to be reversed. The back of the building needs to face the buildings that are already on Lindora, so that the front of the building opens up the parking lot, allows the police department, when they're driving by, to see any issues very clearly. They're not hidden in a corner. It gives the residents across the street on Carbondale the ability to have some privacy that will not be there when they build that second story. How would you like somebody looking down in your front window, from their back window, and watching you do whatever you want to do in your room? Why do I have to close my windows? But if we put it on the back side and reverse the entire lot, at least the people on Carbondale have privacy. And the people on Lindora will have privacy. And who cares if they look out at the businesses down below? Maybe it will entice them to go down and shop more. Heaven forbid. All right. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Mr. Hatcher. Any questions for the public speaker, my colleagues? Seeing none. Thank you, sir. Our next public speaker is Sheila Blanchard. Ms. Blanchard, welcome to council.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to address the council tonight, Chair Dorans and President Harden. As he stated, my name is Sheila Blanchard, and I have lived in this neighborhood. I've been in Columbus 25 years, and I've lived there for 22 of those years. I am standing here today to express my strong opposition to this proposed rezoning of commercial lot at 4970 Lindora. While I understand totally the need for additional housing, this particular project is incompatible with the established character of our neighborhood, the use patterns, planning intent of our neighborhood, it just doesn't, it doesn't fit. And I am also a member of the council, but I'm here as a resident, and we have always been pretty much a council, I mean, a commission of yes. In reviewing this request, I respectfully ask council to reevaluate the proposal in the light of the Duncan factors, which guide zoning decisions and variance considerations in Ohio. When these factors are applied to this project, it becomes clear that the rezoning would be inappropriate and detrimental to the community. Substantial change to the character of the neighborhood. The area surrounding 4970 Lindora consists of thousands of stable, single-family homes, a city park that serves families, seniors, and children daily. They don't have anywhere to go. We want to keep public safety and our children in the neighborhood to have someplace viable. They have to go across to Naffsor Park, a dangerous road, to be able to do anything. They need the park. They need the space. They need the availability. It's inconsistent with the existing development pattern and the Eastland Plan. The intensity of the use would significantly disrupt the quiet, family-oriented environment and erode the character that residents have maintained for decades. Negative impact on adjacent properties. Placing high-density apartments directly next to single-family homes and a public park will likely reduce will likely reduce nearby property enjoyment and potentially property values. I've already been told by everyone that I live around the corner, everyone over there is going to sell their property. Increased noise, activity, lighting, and overflow parking will impact homeowners who reasonably rely on the predictability of current zoning. The neighbor that lives right across from that property had a, we've had trucks, cars tore up right there on Carbondale. It's just not viable. The lack of feasibility alternatives without rezoning. The applicant has not demonstrated that 4970 cannot be developed for its intended commercial purpose. In fact, the neighborhood would benefit more from appropriately, an appropriately scaled commercial service rather than additional residential strain. Adverse effects on public services and infrastructure. This project will put additional pressure on roads, parking, emergency access, and pedestrian safety. Local streets are not designed to handle the traffic and the volume. And the intent and spirit of the zoning plan. The longstanding zone for this, for Lindora supports neighborhood-serving commercial uses, which provide convenience, economic activity, and walkable access for residents. Rezoning the land to residential, especially for high-density apartments undermines the city's comprehensive plan. And in closing, I'll just say the impact on government objectives, public health, safety, and wellness. For these reasons, I respectfully urge the commission, the zoning chair, city council to deny the rezoning request. Thank you for your time. I have a lot more to say, but we don't have any more time.
Thank you, Ms. Blanchard. Questions or comments for my colleagues for public speaker? Ms. Blanchard? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Appreciate being here. I have a couple of questions for city staff before I ask the applicant to come back up. So, one, just for a couple of points of clarification, you know, earlier, and I think we also heard from city staff, about the land use here aligning with the Southeast Land Use Plan, which was enacted in 2018. However, we've had a number of public speakers that spoke about the Eastland for All Plan. And Mr. Laura, I was wondering if you could sort of speak about the distinction between those two, just so that folks don't feel like we're talking sort of around this. I want to make sure we're being very clear about what, when I say that this aligns with the Southeast Land Use Plan that was adopted in 2018, how that sort of aligns or doesn't align with what our public speaker spoke about the Eastland for All Plan?
Sure. Thank you. So, the Southeast Land Use Plan is the council-adopted land use recommendations for this area. This property in particular is recommended mixed-use one, which allows for mixed uses, but it also allows for strictly commercial or, as proposed, an apartment building. This is different than the Eastland for Everyone Plan, which is a community plan that includes some land use visions and it includes as well for this site or this area and the nearby park, visions for what could happen potentially in that area. So, they're, they serve a different purpose ultimately. The land use plan serves to make recommendations for zonings and variances and has design guidelines associated with that so that staff and commissions and communities can review whether it's appropriate based on that land use recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. I want to ask a representative from the city attorney's office, Mr. Shin. So, we've had a number of speakers bring up the Duncan factors with regard to this application. So, this is a rezoning, not a variance that's before us at this point. And just to make sure, again, we're being very clear with folks about what is considered and not considered as we, as we review these kinds of things. The Duncan factors are, come from a Ohio Supreme Court case that reviews whether or not an applicant has justified a hardship for a variance. So, those Duncan factors in the House Supreme Court case are applicable to variance requests and not necessarily rezonings. Is that a fair assessment?
That is my understanding, Chair Dorrance. And I just was rereading the case as we've been talking.
Great. Thank you. So, again, those are factors that are applicable to the variance that comes along here, but not necessarily the rezoning that's before us here.
That is my understanding, Chair.
Good. Want to pause and see if any of my council colleagues have questions with the department before, or any of the city departments before I bring the applicant's representative back up? Seeing none, Mr. Perry? Any additional comments you'd like to make?
A couple of things. Thank you for asking that question. Duncan factors are not important to rezoning. Rezoning is a legislative function as opposed to variances are not legislative actions. They're administrative law and the Ohio Supreme Court established those criteria for the evaluation of variance requests. I think we've covered that it's, is in conformance with the Southeast Land Use Plan. There have been, as an aside, there was a, it was stated at the Development Commission that there was a tire on the property and certain trees were overgrown. My understanding is that the property owner removed the tire and trimmed the trees. If it needs to be done again, it'll be done again. I'll follow up on that. And lastly, the Eastland Plan, Eastland Plan came up with the, with the area commission and my understanding is that a draft of the Eastland Plan was produced about a year ago and it has not progressed, but I, but I have read it to be, to see if there's a point that we need to address. And Eastland Plan is driven by planning efforts of the council and the staff to determine how should Eastland Mall be redeveloped. Eastland Mall is about 90 acres and it's addressing that. It addresses that high-density multifamily should occur along Refugee Road and Hamilton Road, as one might expect, where high-density and three, four, five, six-story multifamily should occur. But, and it makes reference to the park with improvements to the park, but there is nothing in the Eastland Plan that says multifamily shouldn't occur anywhere other than the Eastland Mall site or, or that, or that this particular site should be, should be something in particular. So, I'd offer that for some clarification on the points.
Any additional questions by council members for the applicant representatives? Councilmember Bankson?
Are you able to also speak to the other properties that this developer owns or, or no? I mean, I'm not sure if the gentleman was talking about this specific property or does he own other properties as well, as far as the maintenance issue that was brought up?
Councilmember Bankson and I are not able to address other properties.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council colleagues? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Perry. One last question for Mr. Blushman. So, we had a public speaker speaking specific to the traffic issue. Historically, and I just want to make sure that we're wrapping our heads around this correctly, historically, when we've got our traffic engineers that review a project, is it fair to say it's more or less intense for commercial properties when you talk about the numbers of trips, the number of traffic that are there compared to residential properties?
Sure. Speaking to the traffic generation, this particular use would likely be a lesser generation of traffic than almost any of the commercial users that would be permitted on this site today.
Thank you. Finally, any last questions or comments from council members for either departments or anything that they'd like to comment on? Councilmember Brosta Depea?
Thank you, Chair Dorrance. So, I have been, I know this area well. I'm a lifelong East sider. I live four minutes away from where I grew up. My sister actually lived on Carbondale, so I am very familiar with this area. And I think what's interesting is as we talk about zoning issues, there's always a nuance. There's always something to look underneath what a particular law or policy or whatever may be. And in this area, you know, I think about how we built our high schools in the middle of communities, right? And so, when you think about CCS talking about closing a school, I mean, you have independents that literally takes acres in the middle of a very residential area because people walk to school. A Plus Arts Academy is right here. This green space was green space. And while there are zoning policies that we put into place, and I certainly am obviously an advocate of zoning, if you know anything about the East Side or take a five-minute drive anywhere on the East Side, you know that we have anything from duplexes to fourplexes to housing, smaller housing developments in different parts of the area. My concern with this particular project is that if you zoom out, this is such a large area that could be a much, a robust park. It could be reimagined, but once we plop something in there, it's difficult to take that away. It's difficult to take it out. This is a place, this is now almost like a monument that lives there, that even in the future, if we wanted to do something, we have to build around it in the middle of a place that I think has a better land use. And when we have a zoning code that we are looking at that blankets specific areas, you know, obviously, that zoning code doesn't always speak to the nuance of it. It's people who speak to the nuance of it. And so, for me, having the familiarity of this particular area, speaking with our commissioners, speaking to our residents in this area, it's just, it's difficult for me to vote yes on this because I think there's a much better use of what this land could be and a better reimagining of what this could be for literally, if you look at this area, all of these residents that live there. And getting stuck with a smaller building that does not address all of the needs of the area, it, that's difficult for me to vote yes on. And I agree that we need housing and I have voted, I've had many communities very, very upset with me because I have pushed back, but in this particular area, it just, for me, does not make sense for this particular project to go here. And I know that we, other things could go here, but for 40-some years, what we gave people was green space and now we're taking that away. And I know that we can't prevent everything that's going to go here, but in a, in a time where I have a say, my say is no.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other questions or comments from council colleagues? Councilmember Weish?
So, we hear the term green space all the time when we talk about empty turf lots. The reality is an empty turf lot is bad for the health of the environment and everyone around it. When we talk about green space that is vibrant and useful, we should be talking about trees and pollinators and more things in there other than turf grass. It does not do us any good just to have grass.
Agreed. This is an area that's highly used and there is a park there. And we could build trees, but we can't if we have a building there. So, that's the only thing that I would push back on, councilmember, is that I hear you. I think in this particular area, though, again, there's football that happens in this area, there's people who walk their dogs, there's people walk in the area, there's a school there, there's multiple housing units that have children in it. So, and look, I grew up in a place where we didn't always have a green lot. You know, we had, we had a parking lot and we still played on it. And it may not have been good for the air that we breathe because there weren't pollinators, but you know what we did? We ran around and we played and we stayed out of trouble. So, I mean, there's, I agree with you, but I also respectfully disagree with you.
Look at that respectful disagreement that Columbus City Council here did this evening. Well, first, before I ask for a vote, I do, again, want to compliment the area commission again. We actually, again, referred this legislation back to committee this last summer, which I think is one of the few times I've done this as, as the chair of this committee, particularly because there were outstanding questions that the community wanted to work through with the city regarding what the future of this site could be. To councilmember Brosta Depea's point about a more holistic approach to it. Ultimately, in this specific instance, you know, those efforts were not fruitful, which I think is disappointing, but nevertheless, that was the outcome there. You know, as we look and consider what this site is and, you know, at the same time, we're talking about rezoning the whole city, we're talking about sending forth new land use recommendations for the whole city to be more reflective of what the future of Columbus is going to be, it is difficult from time to time to react to individual projects that sort of come before us and are viewed and one-off rather than, again, much more holistic how these things do or do not fit together. But ultimately, the question before the body is, this is currently zoned as C4. This project, a version of it, frankly, a more intense version of it, I've heard from folks that are concerned about the height of the current building. It could be higher with the current zoning. Folks are concerned around the traffic. You've heard from our traffic folks that you would likely see more traffic with commercial use that is here. When we talk about the need for affordability, adding more units to an area is actually really important for the future of that community, to have more people that call that place home. Particularly, we talk about this being two stories. This is one of the lower-density residential developments that frankly, this body's considered. And we're talking about multifamily development in certainly recent months. That's not to say anyone is right or anyone is wrong. Reasonable minds can disagree about whether or not they feel a proposal meets those standards. But for me, it comes back to what is ultimately the question, whether or not to rezone this project at this request with a lower intensity than what could currently be on the table. And for me, concerned all the factors. And again, reasonable minds can disagree about this, but I think ultimately, we take these questions very seriously and, again, the recommendations very seriously, but I think when you consider the facts holistically, you know, it may be frustrating that that's just the question that's being asked. But again, is a question of whether or not we keep the C4 and ultimately, something progresses further that may be even more objectionable to individuals in the community, or do we act on this and produce 20 more housing units within this area? For me, I think it's met those burdens. So, therefore, I move for passage by voice.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Bankson?
Yes.
Brosta Depea?
No.
Beatty?
Yes.
Dayakauer?
Yes.
Dorrance?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Weish?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes. Ordinance is passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1980-2025 to granted variance provisions of section 3312.21A landscaping and 3312.27 parking setback line in Columbus City that's properly located at 4970 Lindora Drive to allow reduced parking lot landscaping and parking setback for an apartment building in the LAR1 Apartment Residential District. This is the concurrent variance, the rezoning we just considered. The applicant, again, proposed a 20-unit apartment building with variances to reduce the required parking lot trees to zero and instead place the four required shade trees within the perimeter of the parking lot and reduce the required parking setback along Lindor Avenue from 25 feet to 12 feet. The request of council variance will be, are supported as they will allow the onsite to be developed in a manner that's consistent with Columbus citywide planning policies, also known as C2P2 design guidelines. This proposal is also consistent with the city's objective of creating more housing across city, proposal is approved in city staff and a disapproval in the Greater Southeast Area Commission. Since we just considered, we're only considering the variance request, I'm just going to ask for a brief summary from Mr. Dietrich from the Department of Building and Zoning Services. So, Dietrich, floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Dorrance. The requested variances to parking lot shade trees and a reduced parking setback from Lindor Avenue will allow the site to be redeveloped with a 20-unit apartment building as shown on the submitted site plan with that rezoning ordinance. Staff concurs with the applicant's analysis of the seven practical difficulties in achieving the proposed 20-unit apartment building on the subject site. The proposed site and building, the proposed site plan is consistent with both the Southeast Land Use Plan and C2P2 design guidelines. And additionally, the proposed apartment building is consistent with the city's objective with creating more housing in all areas of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Questions from my council colleagues in the department this time? Great. I do want to pause and see if folks from the area commission would like to speak on the variance.
The developer.
Ms. Barnes? And Ms. Barnes, since this is a variance, I'm going to swear you in before you testify. Just to let you know. Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give? Shove the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under pains of penalty of perjury. So, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is your thing.
I'm very disappointed in you guys' decision on the other one. I don't know if I'm allowed to say that, but I'm saying it. And I just want to show you, if you haven't seen the Lindora picture of what could have been, which will not be now because you agreed to that, you've put us in a situation where we have to rethink this $1 million project that you guys put us, that we went and spent all that time on. As far as that parking lot variance, I guess it really doesn't matter. There are trees currently on the, on the property, the variance that they want for this property. We just want to make sure that there are enough parking spaces for the ugly brown building that they're going to put there that looks like a project building in our neighborhoods that we think is not appropriate for the neighborhood that you're going to allow to be put there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to invite the applicant, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Green?
Actually, ma'am, I just want to respond-
Actually, ma'am, I, I just want to respond. I just want to, first of all, I want to thank you for coming down here and I want to, um, I want to acknowledge all the incredible work that your area commission has done. I think, you know, for me, this is tough. This is now like the second or third time I've said this thing I'm about to say to just today, but I recognize the fact that, you know, oftentimes when we're sitting up here, we don't, you, on the record, you don't get to vote fifty-one percent for something and forty-nine percent for something. You're a yes or you're a no. Um, and we feel that a lot of times up here, but it's not always reflected, of course. And I think that, you know, the, I, I just want to a little, a little bit explain sort of my perspective on this, just given, you know, when we're sitting up here and we're considering these things, you know, it's, it's whether or not this is an appropriate use of the parcel, given the fact that it's currently allowed by zoning and a much more extreme version, I feel like it fits here. And, you know, based on the current context of the zoning, and, you know, if we had a parcel owner that was coming to us with a park today to put on this parcel, which we don't have that before us, I would also be supportive of that. And so, you know, I hope to be able to continue working with your commission to figure out how we can continue to make the neighborhood more vibrant and more beautiful, maximize the green space that's going to be left in this area, to make sure that it's still a place that families can safely and comfortably be able to enjoy. And, um, again, I just want to thank you for being here today and, um, and for being willing to partner with us in this work we're doing.
Ms. Green, I definitely appreciate your concern and, and your response. I sit on a, um, school board and I've sat on the commission for quite a few years now, and we've had to make tough choices, even on school boards. I understand making tough choices, but this choice didn't have to be as tough as it is. We could have done better as a city council and a city to purchase that property. We purchased so much stuff around the city, and the seventy-five thousand dollars that that property was initially purchased for could have been purchased a long time ago. Our guidelines for purchasing less than a quarter of an acre is the reason why. He didn't see it because he only looks at more than a quarter of an acre. So this was less than a quarter of an acre and never came across his desk until we brought it to him. And it took forever for us to get even a meeting with the people that were purchasing, I mean, that had purchased this land. And the lands out there for that much time, who would go buy something when they're already happy with the fact that it's available and it's green and it's in front of their house and there's nothing blocking, you know, their view of anything? And it seems like as soon as we came along with a plan for how we would like to see the community gather together and have, have a place, as soon as we did that, opportunists, you know, opportunity knocked for someone and they became an opportunist to purchase the land and voila, you know, some apartments that, all around, there's apartments that be, are being built over there. So these twenty apartments are not going to make any difference. They're not going to make a difference. So, they're just going to impact that neighborhood with single-family, I mean, with one-bedroom apartments that, um, they already have enough crime and the speed limit has already been asked multiple times to be reduced over there because people's cars have been hit on the road, et cetera, et cetera. So, I don't know when the city's going to do anything to help some of these neighbors, but those are things that are really things you can still do.
Chair Dorrance, if I, if I could, a councilmember, you? Oh, yeah. Got you. Um, I just wanted to say, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Barnes and Commissioner Harper for your continued advocacy. I think, you know, I, I just also want to acknowledge, there's been parts of the Eastman Plan that, you know, have not, we've already seen not come to fruition, right? There's partners that had to pull out for different reasons, and I think, you know, it's one of the challenging things about the plans that we have is that we, we envision together and these, both these plans take time and then some conditions change at different times. I just wanted to say, I think, you know, it's, it's something that we've taken note of, it's something that we've been talking about, especially as you think about, I mean, you all, I think, were there when I made the announcement about, about a commitment to a eastside CDC for this reason, for someone to think about these properties that are sitting there and how do we start to protect them so that, that way, we can start to build what folks want to see in the community? So, I just wanted to acknowledge your advocacy. I know that today is disappointing. I think there's much work ahead of us. There's still very, there's still parts of this plan that can come to fruition with our partnership working together. So, I hope you will relay that to the other commissioners and the other folks that were there today, and you certainly have our commitment to continue to do that as we work together because this is a part of the city that we all love, and I know that all of you are very committed to, and I'm committed to continuing to do that work with you all as I know that my colleagues are as well.
Thank you.
Even if we don't always agree or respectfully disagree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Want to invite the applicants representative, if you have any comments on the variances you'd like to make? And Dave off to swear you in since the variance. Yep. Thanks. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? Shove the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under pains of penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thanks. Floor is yours.
Thank you. President Harden, zoning chair, all council members, my name is Dave Perry. I'm here as agent for this ordinance. This is the variance ordinance that goes with the previous ordinance for rezoning of 4972 Lindora Drive. There are two very minor variances. As I indicated in the previous discussion, the, a small parking variance was eliminated. The two minor variances have to do with, number one, with landscaping on the location of trees, not, not reducing the number of trees, but on the location of trees. And that is due to, all these projects have many, many design factors that have to be addressed, and to, to get a refuse truck onto the property for servicing the dumpsters means there can't be tree islands in the middle of the parking lot. So there are, the trees being provided around the perimeter exceed the code-required trees, but they aren't within the code-designated location. The second variance, parking setback, this relates to what I said about parking, the project exceeds code-required parking by one or two spaces, but that parking setback is to reduce the Lindora Drive parking setback to accommodate the proposed number of parking spaces. So, there are two, two very minor issues associated with this.
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues for the applicants representative? Seeing none. Again, just for clarification, these are three, what I would consider fairly minor variances that are coming before us, again, on landscaping, the setback to move the project forward. So, any questions for my colleagues at this point? Seeing none, I move to accept the staff report into evidence as an exhibit by voice.
Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Bangston.
Yes.
Boroside Padilla.
Yeah.
Beatty.
Yes.
Dayakauer.
Yes.
Dorrance.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Remy.
Yes.
Weish.
President Harden.
Yes. Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the finesse of staff is the finesse of council by voice.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston.
Yes.
Boroside Padilla.
No.
Beatty.
Yes.
Dayakauer.
Yes.
Dorrance.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Remy.
Yes.
Weish.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next we have ordinance 2788-2025 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.039R4 Residential District 3312.49C Required Parking and 332.05A4 Aired District Lot With Requirements and 3332.15R4 Aired District Requirements and 3332.19Fronting, 3332.26C Minimum Side Yard Permitted and 3332.27 Rear Yard. And of the Columbus City Council property located 671 East Gate Street to allow a single-unit dwelling and a two-unit dwelling on one lot will reduce development standards in the R4 Residential District. Site consists of one parcel developed, a single-unit dwelling. The Board of Zoning Justment Appeals, order BZA 22-155 was approved to allow for an addition of the existing single-unit dwelling located at the rear of the property. The applicant now proposes to construct a two-unit dwelling on the front of the lot. Proposal is approved from city staff, the Columbus South Side Area Commission, but we do have a public speaker signed up to speak against this ordinance, so before we get to that public comment, we'll hear staff report from city staff, beginning with Mr. Tim Dietrich from the Department of Building and Zoning Services.
Thank you, Chair Dorrance, President Harden, members of council. CV 25-052 will allow a new two-unit dwelling on a lot developed with a single-unit dwelling. A council variance is required because the R4 district does not allow a single and a two-unit dwelling on one lot. Variances to reduce required parking, lot width, lot area, fronting, side and rear yards are also included in this request. North, south, east and west of the site are single and two-unit dwellings in the R4 Residential District. The site is located within the boundaries of the Columbus South Side Area Commission, whose recommendation is for approval. Staff concurs with the applicant's analysis of the seven practical difficulties in achieving the proposed two-unit dwelling on the subject site. The requested council variance will allow a single and two-unit dwelling on one lot with reduced development standards. Staff supports the proposal as, as it is consistent with the near-south side plan's land use recommendation and the submitted building elevations are consistent with C2P2. Additionally, the request will not add an incompatible use to the area, and therefore, we are in approval.
Thank you. Mr. Dietrich, any questions? Seeing none, we'll next hear from Mr. Christopher Law from the Division of Planning.
Thank you, Chair Dorrance, President Harden and members of council. Planning supports the proposal. The proposal, uh, proposed use is consistent with the near-south side plan land use recommendation, which recommends medium-density mixed residential that would support a mix of one-to-four unit dwellings. Additionally, Columbus citywide planning policies, C2P2, supports the reduction for parking because there is a presence of on-street parking and because of the existing single-unit building that's located on the alley. We'll also note that the existing R4 zoning would allow for one, two, three, or four-unit buildings on this site. We've also reviewed the, uh, the elevations and they are consistent with C2P2 design guidelines. Thank you.
So, Mr. Law, just to focus in on that, so the existing zoning would potentially allow basically what's coming before us today, but because we're sort of going backwards from how this site is developed, that's essentially what creates the variance request here, right?
So, it would allow a four-unit building if it was all in one structure.
Correct. So because these are detached, like, that is the sort of animating event behind. So, if you, if someone were to build, and again, all, like, you know, two or three units, all in one building, that would be permitted under the existing zoning.
Correct, as a, as a use, yes.
Thanks. Did want to pause and see if, Mr. Buschman, if you had anything to add?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair Dorrance, President Harden and members of council. In consideration of the fact that this parcel includes a dwelling immediately adjacent to the alley that would block the ability for this parcel to have a parking area accessed from the alley, and that the predominant pattern along East Gate Street includes parking that is accessed from the alleys along the rear of the parcels, the Department of Public Services can't support this proposal that includes a requested variance to reduce the number of required parking spaces from six to zero and with no driveway access in East Gate Street. With these comments noted, the Department of Public Services in support of this application, I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
So, Mr. Buschman, we go from like zero to six and you say you're in support, that may stand out to folks and say, hey, that's, that's a sizable reduction. Is that based upon sort of the existing street parking that, that's sort of available on that street?
Right, and part of it is considering that to create a driveway would take away parking on the street, so it's not necessarily a net gain of, or loss of six, how you, how you'd see that. So, um, since there is that block, I believe there's maybe one driveway, and, and so the predominant pattern there is street parking, and, and so we would just like to keep that pattern there.
And again, to that point, if you install the driveway, you're losing one or one and a half parking spots already, just by virtue of taking that off the street.
Correct.
Thanks. And finally, Ms. Prosser.
Yes, thank you. Chair Dorrance, Council President Harden, members of council. The proposed project at 671 Gate Street in the South Side neighborhood supports the Columbus housing strategy by expanding housing options in an area experiencing change, but there, where there is limited opportunity to add new housing. In this neighborhood, rents for one-bedroom units have increased eighteen percent from last year. At seventeen hundred thirty-one dollars a month, rents are fifteen percent higher than one-bedroom apartments in the city. Median home listing price in the zip code are ten percent higher than the rest of the city, and the housing vacancy rate is just three-point-three percent, indicating a highly constrained market with demand for new housing. Duplexes are already a prominent type of housing in this neighborhood, making up eleven percent of the parcels in the zip code. However, when compared to sixty-six percent of the lots occupied by single-family homes, it is clear that there is a need for additional housing diversity in the community. Only three percent of the lots in the zip code have apartments, which limits not only the amount of housing available, but also the diversity of housing options in this high-opportunity neighborhood. At the same time, there are only a hundred and fifty vacant lots out of the ten thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-nine total lots within the zip code, which means that only one-point-five percent of the lots in the neighborhood are available to build new housing to meet this demand and slow the increase in housing prices and the displacement of residents. In neighborhood where there is limited opportunity to increase availability of housing, it is critical to find appropriate ways to infill new units, and duplexes are an impactful and important way to utilize vacant lots to address our housing needs. Thank you and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the departments before I invite the applicant? Seeing none, I would invite Mr. Jared Abach, the applicant. Mr. Abach, welcome to council. Just so you know, I'm going to swear you in when you get to the podium. Please raise your right hand, be sworn in. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? Shove the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under pains of penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours, sir. Do you have any comments you'd like to make or you want to have folks ask questions if they have them?
I don't have a whole lot to say. Wasn't planning on speaking today, but I guess somebody's coming to talk. Basically, it was a, a house that was torn down and they converted the garage that was in the alleyway to a unit, which kind of limits how we build a, a new unit. So, we're proposing to build a, kind of a separate structure in a, kind of a vacant area of, of the property, and it kind of lines back the street, the street presence of the house instead of having kind of a setback that doesn't go with the, the street.
I, I know there's a lot of discussion with the area commission around sort of the placement of the driveway or not placement of the driveway, and ultimately, they were in support of this application after, again, some additional dialogue about removing, and with the city about sort of the proposal that's in front of us. So it sounds like there's been some changes that you've made throughout this process to, that's got, got us to here.
Yeah, the, uh, the original kind of informal meeting we had with the neighborhood is they, there was originally, somebody would park in the back of the, of the house, but I think that was before a fence was put in and it was illegally kind of parking. So we, we couldn't accommodate anything in the back. So we initially put a driveway, but the, the area, the neighborhood commission did not want the driveway. So, we then again removed the driveway, so.
Great. Any questions, my colleagues, for the applicant? Mr. Abach, just to let you know, we'll have a public speaker and I may or may not have you come back up after that if you want to address anything that I say.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. As I mentioned, through the clerk's office, we received one public speaker slip this evening to speak against the ordinance. We have Ms. Leah Mo Man. Welcome to council. So again, I'm going to swear you in when I get you up here. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? Shove the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under pains of penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours.
Thank you for your time tonight, council. I just want to quickly run through when this was brought to our attention as a community back in April. There was an impromptu meeting with the contractor. The owner has always been a hundred percent absent from this project. We've never met him. He came with no plans, no drawings, it was very informal. I followed up then in April and May asking for some kind of actual drawing. We then had also reviewed the variance application. There was incorrect parcel ID. The listings on the variance were incorrect. The listings on the variance were incorrect. It was never a garage. It was a carriage house and always a dwelling with a basement in it. They, we were then pressured to vote on it, but when I called the city and spoke with Eastman Johnson, he told me that they haven't even reviewed this and that we should not be voting on it. We were then pressured by the council to, or commission to vote on it, which we wouldn't do because we had nothing legitimate, no actual professional drawings to actually vote on. It was then rejected by Eastman Johnson and the review committee. We were then once again pressured again that we had to vote on it, but we had nothing to vote on. The city staff rejected back in August and then there was a site hearing in September with still no new drawings that we were given to vote on. The site hearing, it was voted down at the site hearing and not, a few days later on September 16th, the commission had a meeting and moved a vote around, we're not sure exactly how, and moved this through. The community does not accept this and this has been voted down and rejected all the way through the process. We're hoping and we need it rejected, resubmitted, and we'd like to have them start the process over. There was parking there previously before the fence was put up without a permit and the other changes were made. Dorrance mentioned that there is one driveway over at 690 East Gates. That is a grandfathered in, informal, like illegal driveway that is grass and stone. So, there really is no other driveways on the entire section of this street of gates on that side of Parsons. I think that's all I have. We just wanted to run through the history of everything just to make it clear that we as a community did not get to see any of this and not get a real vote on it.
So, if I can ask a follow-up, so it sounds like there's some concerns around process here as far as like the actual application that's before us today. Are there specific issues?
The parking, we're not, we're not behind losing, you know, going from six to zero. We've, this is our first time having a call and we're always very, very lenient on parking and we've made a lot of concessions, but nothing ever like this.
So, if I, if I understand correctly, you mentioned though that most folks don't have driveways within this area?
They do not. And it's a street that's full of park, like full of cars.
Okay, so I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around this a little bit. So, in this instance, you're saying this project in particular should have off-street parking compared to the other ones that, in the neighborhood that currently do not?
Well, there, you're, you're talking about smaller, like smaller single-home dwellings, where he's trying to put an apartment at the back now and then two apartments at the front. I think the residents want to see something that's a smaller footprint that doesn't require all of the parking with, we're, I think that we're trying to look for something smaller to go there.
Okay. I want to make sure I understood that correctly. Thank you.
Yes.
Questions from council members? Councilmember?
Can, so I understand, I see that I have the duplex rendering. So, it's a duplex with a house in the back?
Yes, there is a carriage house that was always there, the previous single-family.
I see, I'm looking at the street view. Is that the carriage house that's still there or not?
Yes, it's at the back and it is right on the edge of the alley.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions? Ms. Mo, you're here not only as a neighbor, but also is it, you're with the civic association as well?
We're, we're not a civic. We're just a community organization.
Gotcha. Wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yes.
Great.
Representing the neighbors and residents right nearby.
Okay. Any additional questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Buschman, I want to go back into this parking question. This seems central to the folks that came down here tonight. Can you just walk us through sort of the, the analysis that you all go through? Because I think that, that is really important if that's the, the key point of contention with, with some of the neighbors. And again, to their point, this is, and this is different than some of the other things that are on that street, so I think it's a fair question for them to sort of ask compared to, you know, an existing single-family house, house that, you know, doesn't have off-street parking?
Sure, and I guess we can kind of just briefly talk through our analysis of that. You know, looking at this, the, the existing condition has one dwelling unit, the carriage house on the rear. So, effectively, there, there is a dwelling unit that does not appear to have parking today. So, but that, that's already there. So, really, we're looking at the incremental change. So, we're looking at the incremental change of this two-unit dwelling. And so, that would effectively, you know, the change that's basically happening is for, for required parking spaces. That, that's really the, the required change. So, I mean, there could be a couple of different ways this could have fleshed out. There could be a request for a driveway there, which there could be a couple of parking spaces and maybe mitigating that. However, that would take at least one space off the street. So, that would probably be a net of one. Or it could, the parking variance could just be effectively four parking spaces being varied and then keeping that on-street area. So, that, I think that's really the, the question to the council this evening is, is that enough to, to push this application away? I mean, from our department's perspective, we don't see that as, as adversely impacting other property owners. I, I think, you know, the, the footprint is, is, looking at the footprint and look, it looks basically square footage of maybe a single-family house. So, the actual usage and occupants may be similar to a, a larger single-family home. So, so looking at those considerations kind of factor into our, our analysis of the parking and, and how, how we come up with that recommendation.
So, if I can summarize real quick, let me know if I'm getting this wrong. So, one, you have an existing unit that's there. So, that parking is already baked in, right? And then you have potentially two additional units that would come online here. But again, if you included off-street parking, you'd, you'd basically take at least a space and a half off the street. So, again, the question is, how much parking is appropriate for those two additional new units while at the same time factored in that, that you would lose off-street parking based upon, if in fact you require, if you required any off-street?
Correct.
And Mr. Dietrich, the, the folks talked a little bit about sort of the back and forth with the city from an approval process standpoint. Can you just, I think there were some things about disapprovals. I mean, my understanding is that this was approved by the Columbus South Side Area Commission, approved by city staff. Just want to make sure that we've got some clarity there.
Yeah, there, it is possible that when something initially comes into a staff review that there are items that need to be mitigated in order to get staff approval. We do sit here today with city staff approval from zoning and our colleagues as well. And we do have a recommendation form from the Columbus South Side Area Commission of a 721 approval of this if there is no driveway and they were supportive of the parking space from six to zero.
Thank you. Did one invite the applicant back up if there's any comments you'd like to make based upon the public testimony?
I don't know if there was a confusion, but there were, there were two neighborhood commission meetings I had to deal with, so I'm not sure what happened with their commission. I initially met with them and then I, I got pushed to another commission to get a vote. So, I never really had to fully deal with their concerns. I don't know what, what happened in that process.
Yeah, and to be very clear, so the area commissions in Columbus, they're created under city code, so they're technically the official advisory body to council. There are other neighborhood groups, civic associations, but sometimes those take on sort of informal sort of nature of sort of back and forth. But, you know, again, to be clear, this came before, it's coming before this body with approval from that, from that neighborhood group.
Chair Dorrance, is, is the intention of this property to be rental properties?
Yes.
All three?
Yes.
In, in those, are those going to be one-bedroom? When we just think about like how much additional parking is going to be necessary, I think it's also whatever.
The unit in the back is, I believe, one-bedroom and the duplex will be two, well, four units total, or four bedrooms total.
Four bedrooms, okay. Any other questions for folks? Thank you. Appreciate it. You know, I, I think this is one of those situations where, again, when we talk about the central concerns here seem to be parking and, again, I'm not a traffic engineer nor parking expert. That's what we rely upon when we review these applications, which at this point comes to us with approval from folks that have reviewed this application. So, unless there's any additional question or comments, I move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. And finally move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 3103-225 to granted variance provisions, section 3332.035, R3 residential district, 3312.25, maneuvering, 3312.27, parking setback line, 3312.29, parking spaces, and 3321.05A2 vision clearance, 3332.05A4 area district lot with requirements, and 3332.13 area, R3 area district requirements, and 3332.19, fronting, 3332.27 rear yard, and 3332.28 side or rear yard obstruction of Columbus City Codes property located at 2661-2663, Osceola Avenue, to allow two single-unit dwelling with one with a reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. This site consists of one parcel developed with a single-unit dwelling and the request of council variance will allow an accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, at the rear of the lot for the two single-unit dwellings. Staff notes that the Franklin County Auditor acknowledges the existence of an established or ADU on the property. The city of Columbus records indicate the existing rear structure is only a detached garage. This request will conform the existing condition and legitimize the ADU resulting in two single-unit dwellings on one lot. Variance to lot width, fronting, side yard or rear yard, obstruction, maneuvering, parking setback line, parking space, vision clearance, lot area and rear yard are also included in this request. In the future, we will not have this variance, thanks to Councilmember Beatty. This approvals have, this approvals is approved from city staff and the North Linden Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. Finally move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 3105-225 to granted variance provisions, section 3332.035, R3 residential district, 3332.13, R3 area district lot with requirements, 332.19, fronting, and 3332.27 rear yard of Columbus City Codes property located at 2866 Oklon Street to allow two single-unit dwellings on one lot with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. Site consists of one parcel developed with a single-unit dwelling and the request of council variance will allow accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, on the rear of the property resulting in two single-unit lot dwellings. Council variance required current district only allows one single dwelling per lot. Variance to lot area, fronting and rear yard are also included. Proposals approvals from the city staff and the North Linden Area Commission. To my colleagues for question or comments. Seeing none, I move for, to move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. And finally move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 3106-225 to granted variance provisions, section 3332.035, R3 residential district, 3312.21D1 landscaping, 3312.29 parking space, and 3332.05A4 area district lot with requirements and requirements of Columbus City Codes property located at 1287 East Fulton Street to allow a four-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. This site consists of one undeveloped parcel and the request of council variance will allow the development of a four-unit dwelling. A council variance is required because a single-unit dwelling are only allowable residential use in this current district. Variance of parking, lot screenings, stacked parking, area district lot with requirements are also included in the request. Proposals approval from city staff and the Near East Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. And finally move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 3107-225 to granted variance provisions, section 3332.035, R3 residential district, 3312.21D1 landscaping, 3312.29 parking space, and 3332.05A4 area district lot with requirements, and 3332.18D basic computing area, and 3332.21E building lines, section 3332.25B maximum side yard required of Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1461 Franklin Avenue to allow four-unit dwellings with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. Very similar to the previous ordinance, this site consists of one undeveloped parcel and the request of council variance will allow development of a four-unit dwelling. Council variance is required, single-unit dwelling are only allowable in this resident, in this district. Variance to the parking lot screening, stacked parking, area district lot with requirements, lot coverage, building setback and side yard are also included in this request. Proposals approval from city staff and the Near East Area Commission. First move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row. Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Thank you.
And next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. And finally move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Thank you.
And finally, we have ordinance 3110-225 to granted variance provisions, section 3356.03C4 permitted uses, and 3361.02 permitted uses, and 3312.49C required parking of Columbus City Codes for the property located at 155 Hutchinson Avenue to allow ground floor residential uses with reduced parking in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Site consists of one parcel developed with a hotel and the request of council variance will allow a multi-unit residential development of maximum 306 dwelling units while retaining existing commercial spaces. Council variance is required because the ground floor residential uses are not allowed in the current district, which specifically allows for a C4 commercial uses as provided by ordinance number 1145-82. Additionally, a variance to reduce required parking from 823 spaces to 558 parking spaces is also included in requests. Proposals approval from city staff. While there's no area commission in this portion of the city, the Far North Columbus Communities Coalition also recommends approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. And next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. And finally move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Passed.
And with that, that's all we have in today's zoning agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seeing no further, we'll just come for the zoning committee. I'm going to most adjourn. Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorrance, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
We will reconvene our regular meeting in five minutes once the directors reassemble. We will reconvene our regular meeting in five minutes once the directors reassemble.
Say that again, down this journey. I watched my community and purchased a house at sixteen twelve Arlington Avenue about fifteen years ago. What brought me here was this particular home. This particular home here of sixteen thirty-nine Arlington Avenue, a beautiful home. And mind you, if we're building homes, we'll never have the architect and design of these homes. This house really had spoke to me to drove down this block with Buzz Thomas. At the time, I looked at three separate blocks of Genesee, Murdo Avenue area. Age-old homes was built in nineteen ten eighteen hundreds. Sixteen thirty-nine Arlington Avenue, that's all. Don't remember, and please do not forget, because I'm the one who carried these photographs. This was the age-old home was built in eighteen ninety-three with six bedrooms. There's some dresses was in the wall and the bathroom and all this. Three doors down from me was a property was building, was built in nineteen, nineteen oh five, was fifteen forty-eight or Arlington Avenue. That house is particularly gone. But again, we're losing the character of the neighborhood. Healthy homes is fine and all that other stuff, but we want to keep the architect and design. I would say this in closing. Sixteen oh six of Genesee Avenue was, never was up for sale. A four-bedroom house watch it came down about ten years ago. And here, we're talking building, building these modular homes, not out of brick. But again, I'm gonna be all for this, but for three reasons. Want two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars for this.
Thank you.
Two hundred and ninety-three million dollars to have my neighborhood where it was before again, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wilkins, for your advocacy and support of this legislation. If there are no further comments for my colleagues, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Ordinance is passed. The next piece of legislation that I have is ordinance thirty eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-five is to amend the twenty twenty-five capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Affordable Housing Bond Fund to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Columbus Housing Partnership Inc. for an affordable housing development in an amount of up to two-point-five million dollars, to authorize expenditure of up to two-point-five million dollars from the Affordable Housing Bond Fund and declare an emergency. This legislation shows an investment in connecting Columbus residents to both stable housing and stable employment. This ordinance would appropriate two-point-five million dollars in affordable housing bonds to support new affordable housing in partnership with Homeport and Easton Place Homes. This development will offer fifty apartments for families and individuals with a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom homes designed to meet a range of needs. Importantly, this project is the third phase of a long-term plan to bring two hundred affordable rental apartments to the eastern area. Eastern Town Center is home to one of the largest concentration of jobs central, in central Ohio, spanning office, work, retail, hospitality, and more. This is a huge investment in the right way, putting people closer to jobs and opportunity and bringing dignity to all folks who need affordable housing. If there are no questions or comments on this ordinance, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Ordinance is passed. The next piece of legislation I have this evening is ordinance thirty ninety-four dash twenty twenty-five is to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a grant agreement with National Church Residencies, Residencies for an affordable senior housing development in up to the amount of two million dollars, to authorize expenditure of up to two million dollars from the Affordable Housing Bond Fund and to declare, declare an emergency. Before I continue, I want to invite up Reverend Dr. Victor Davis from Trinity Baptist Church, who will share more about this meaningful housing development. Tonight's legislation is a powerful reminder of what can happen when faith and service meet. What we call Yes in God's Backyard is what happens when a church takes the blessings it has been given and uses it to serve, to uplift, and to care for seniors in our own backyards. Pastor, thank you for your leadership in moving this forward. Clerk, over to you.
Can I get a benediction now? Oh, I'm sorry, wrong, wrong environment, wrong, wrong environment. First of all, to the council, to President Pro Tem, and to others that are here, and even to our mayor in his absence, let me thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight about Yes in Our Backyard and the portance of community partnerships. We have been working on this with the advisement of Attorney Lark Mallory, Ray Nix from Nix Development, and of course, our large partner, Partner National Church Residences, who is the largest owner of senior housing in America. In an effort to make sure that we provide housing for the aged population, in just a few weeks, we will be breaking ground on an eighty-four-unit senior housing four-story building in the near east side on the St. Clair Avenue property that Trinity Baptist Church owns. We are excited about it and thank the city for this investment and trust to the partnership. When we see the church, how can I say this? The church must not only do inner work, but the church must recognize the power of doing outer work. So Trinity, in its partnership with the persons that I've stated, will continue to make our footprint impressionable as we provide housing that is safe and affordable and of a good quality for those that are aging in our community. Again, thank you for this opportunity, and have a good night.
Thank you, Doc Davis. Are there any other questions or comments on this, this ordinance? Here and now, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Passed. The last piece of legislation I have is ordinance thirty-one forty-five dash twenty twenty-five, but I'd like to pass this off to Councilmember Otto Beatty. This is a companion piece to important legislation that he passed this evening. Councilmember.
Thank you, Council President Harden. During the public hearings and citizen feedback during the primary legislation on ADUs, we heard a great deal of feedback from citizens that there's a large knowledge gap for people who wish to build accessory dwelling units. Now that we have passed the ADU legislation, there's a need for guidance to help residents and homeowners understand and navigate the process of building ADU. Now, read the ordinance. This ordinance authorizes the Department of Building and Zoning Services to enter into a service contract with Opticos Design, Inc. for the design and publication of an accessory dwelling unit guidebook for Columbus residents for an amount up to fifty thousand dollars from the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund, to authorize an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund, to authorize the expenditure of fifty thousand within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund, and to waive the competitive bidding requirements of chapter three twenty-nine of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. I'd like, at this time, I'd like Director Messer to speak to who Opticos Design, Inc. is, as well as the need to waive the competitive bidding requirements of chapter three two-nine.
Councilmember Beatty, President Harden, and other members of council, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this legislation. Opticos Design is currently assisting us as a contractor with the Zone-In Project. They have specialized knowledge of the Columbus zoning code as a result, and they're going to be critical to producing the ADU guidebook that the council member mentioned in a timely and accurate manner. Furthermore, Opticos has extensive experience in preparing these guidebooks, having produced a model manual, as AARP mentioned. The expertly created guidebook will include details about the zoning code, building code, city permitting process, and practical tips and steps for homeowners as they seek to build an ADU. I'd also like just to take the opportunity to mention the emergency component of the legislation. By authorizing this contract as emergency in conjunction with the passage of the ADU zoning code change earlier, the guidebook can be available for residents relatively soon after passage. It's anticipated that if we don't have to wait the thirty days, that we could have the entire guidebook created within three months, and people can begin building their ADUs sooner. So appreciate your consideration of this ordinance. Happy to ask and answer any questions.
Director Messer, you may have mentioned this, and I might have missed it because it's so early in the evening, but will there also be engagement opportunities for the community, not just the guidebook, but, you know, like information sessions or learning sessions or something around, like even if people, because guidebook feels like I might be a little bit more ready, and information sessions, like I'm a little curious, right? So was that part of the plan as well?
Councilmember, thanks for your question. I'm not aware of anything formal that we have scheduled in that way. I mean, it's a, it's a good suggestion. Certainly, we have many people on our staff ready and willing to answer questions and help people with their projects, but in terms of any kind of a formal sort of training session, we haven't scheduled anything yet, but that's a great idea, and we'll follow up.
Yeah, I believe there'll be an ongoing educational program. There have been discussions already, have already started regarding that.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for my colleagues? Okay, with that being said, I move for passage.
Second. Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Passed. Continuing with going out of order, I'm gonna go now to the Rules and Policy Committee. I chair that committee. We've already passed one piece out of that, but I'm gonna turn the floor over to Councilmember Weiss, so that he can move his piece of legislation forward. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I have four ordinances up for consideration tonight in Rules and Policy. Each of these ordinances addresses the proposed utility rate structure for twenty twenty-six as recommended by the Utility Advisory Board. If these ordinance pass this evening, they'll go into effect January one of twenty twenty-six. I know this is a difficult conversation that none of us want to have because residents are going to feel any increase, small or large. However, our region is projected to grow to three million people by twenty thirty, and we cannot delay the needed investments for water infrastructure. We cannot build additional water capacity when we need it. We have all felt the challenges of delayed infrastructure investments. Think sidewalks, think streetlights, for example. We do not want to find ourselves in a position where we're unable to serve the population with fresh, clean water. The next few years, we'll see several large projects continue, continued or launched to address regional growth and regulatory requirements. The anticipated costs for these projects are rising due to inflation and other factors, but all of them are necessary to continue providing high-quality utility services to current and future customers. The proposal you are about to hear is based on the department's cost-to-service analysis and affordability study and review of upcoming debt payments. After simulating different scenarios and having many hard conversations over the last few weeks, the department has brought forth this proposal. Deputy Director, anything you would add before we get into each of the ordinances?
President Harden, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the rate ordinances, and thank you for your diligence during this process and for your continued support of Columbus Water and Power. I'll just emphasize that the rate-setting process takes a long time. It takes about a year, and we take it very seriously, and we are aware of the impacts on residents. While rate increases are never easy, they are essential to maintain high-quality, resilient service in one of the fastest-growing regions in the country, as mentioned by Councilmember Weiss. These adjustments allow us to responsibly invest in infrastructure that protects public health, especially the new Home Road Water Plant, estimated at two-point-three billion, Blueprint Columbus, our lead service line replacement program, and critical sewer and power system upgrades. We have four ordinances before council this year, and these ordinances reflect important structural updates. They include a new uniform rate for commercial customers. We have the first capacity fee update since two thousand and six. We have sewer fixed charges by meter size. We have a new cogeneration rate that ensures reliable electricity at our treatment plants. And as mentioned, these changes align rates close with our true cost of service and support long-term financial stability. And finally, I just wanted to touch on our discount programs. We also recognize the real pressures that families face with these rate increases. That's why we've strengthened our affordability programs. We're expanding the low-income discount to thirty percent. We've, we have goals that were, are targeted for twenty twenty-six to grow participation. We plan to offer more tools for residents, such as budget billing, extended payment plans, and we're looking at reduced reconnection requirements. So I just want to say thank you again, council, for your leadership, Councilmember Weiss for your leadership in balancing affordability with infrastructure investments needed to serve our community for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go to each ordinance, let me stop here and see if my colleagues have questions for the department for, on the rate increases as a whole. I'm gonna ask after each of the ordinances, but if you have questions or concerns, you want to get out now, we can start right now.
We're, we're on the same wavelength this evening, Council President. Councilmember Weiss, I know that obviously you had a hearing. Some folks were able to tune in, some were not, but can you, in the most succinct, and I know you, we just went through with a, with a department, but in the most succinct way, just give the very quick why, and what are the hard choices that are before us now?
I will try to answer a very complex question as concise and as simple as you ask, but the reality is, I think for the last forty years-ish, I'm probably off on the year-to-date, the department has been projecting water usage and water capacity. We have known since the nineties that at some point, we were going to have to build another water plant to serve this community. The challenge we find ourselves today is that twenty years ago, policy decisions were made to keep rates low, extremely low for a long period of time. And because of that, not preparing for the increase in spending that would be needed for a water plant of this magnitude, two-point-three billion dollars, we find ourselves needing to raise rates now to pay for that future debt obligation. The challenge we have as legislators is, what do we do in this circumstance? We could put it off because that would be easy and say, we're not gonna raise rates, we're gonna keep them as low as possible, but then, three, four years from now, I'd be coming to all of you with a thirty-five percent increase for rates. And that is something I know no one would be on board with. And then we start to risk running out of capacity for water to serve our customers. Infrastructure that is deteriorating around us, unable to replace lead service lines that are creating a public health crisis. And so it sucks to be here, but this is what leading is. Sometimes you have to do the hard thing, and the hard thing today is raising rates because it is needed for the future of our region and our city.
And I, I, thank you, and I, good job. I'm checking his work. Yes? Would you add anything? Great. I, I wanted to just highlight that because I think that it is challenging, I think also, I mean, you know, except for you, Council President, right? Many of us have not been on this council for an extended period of time, and even for you, this, this far, this is your predecessors, right? And so I think as we think about how the city is growing, and we think about the choices that we need to make now, it is difficult to be in this, in this position, and it is difficult, you know, again, I said this at the start of my council meeting, I have three extra people living in my house now, so my water bill is gonna look a little different, has been looking a little different, right? And so I think as we're making these hard choices and what this feels like for people month to month, and what the impact is that's happening at the federal level, at the state level, and now at the local level, if we don't make these choices now, you know, I think five, ten years down the line, what do these choices then look like, right? And so I just wanted to highlight that because I know you and I have had these conversations, and this was a difficult one for me, just again, people are feeling the pinch of all the things, and how do we make things easier for them? And so I think pushing on ensuring that folks have the accessibility, because we don't have enough folks enrolled in the program, it is making sure that the barrier to access that program for assistance is lower, because a lot of those federal guidelines that other programs out there follow are outdated. You know, my mom, when she was alive, made seventeen, a hundred dollars a month, and they said she made too much money, right? She still had two mortgages, and that's a reality of a lot of people in our community. And so I want to make sure that before we go through this, it is late tonight, but that we acknowledge where we are. I don't think any of us like this, right? I think we acknowledge that it's difficult for what's gonna happen in the future, and I want to make sure that folks really understand the why and understand what the impact today, a bigger, a little bit bigger of an impact today means less of a huge impact tomorrow, and that we need to make sure that we work really, really hard to make sure that this is accessible for all, and that the people who are feeling it the most get that assistance that they need, and that we're monitoring that, and that we continue to think about how we can reach out for our folks and continue to be there for them and be the safety net that very rapidly is going away for many, many people in our community. So thank you.
I appreciate that, Councilmember. Council President.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to build on what the council member was saying. I think that, again, we all recognize how strained everyone is in this moment, you know, as folks are preparing for Thanksgiving and Christmas, they're feeling like there's less money at the table. And one of the things that we have to watch for in a city that is growing is that the growth that we have to obviously invest in to keep safe drinking water continue to grow doesn't continue to feel like it's coming at the expense of folks who have been here, because it will create a very, very dangerous environment where our current residents will start to say, nah, we don't want any of them, those folks, because my property taxes went up forty-two percent, because my, my water bill just increased by eighteen percent. And so that point that council member made, and this is the conversation we had during the hearing, that we don't have enough folks who, who qualify for a rate reduction signing up for this program, not nearly enough. And I really pushed the department to have a bolder goal to get more folks signed up. It's one thing that we all are gonna have to bear this thing as folks are struggling, but it's a whole nother travesty, tragedy that folks who don't have to pay, who qualify not to have to pay a higher rate are paying it. And a lot of those folks are renters, and that's another thing that we are working on, how, how we can break the renters out so that that isn't continued to compound. And so it is a very tough conversation. I actually think that even at this late hour, it's not something we should rush by because folks are going to feel this. And, and I think the count, the, the questions that we asked during the public hearing, the questions and the conversation that we have now, truthfully, the amendment that we are adding to this legislation are the reasons why I am, why we understand we have to take this, this vote. And I don't know if you're gonna talk about the amendment, but, but that is how I got, I got to supporting.
Yeah, so I appreciate both comments, and I think we, as a council in Columbus Water and Power, have to do more to ensure that we are tracking what this is looking like. And if it's looking like it's heading in the wrong direction in which we don't have additional folks signing up, we need to reevaluate what this capital improvement plan looks like for the future. So I want to read the title of the legislation, and then I will talk about the amendment that was submitted to the clerk earlier. So first, I have ordinance thirty eighty-two dash twenty twenty-five to amend various sections of chapter eleven oh five of Columbus City Codes, to enact new water rates and charges for the year beginning January one, twenty twenty-six, to expand eligibility for low-income and eligible senior customer discount programs, to update the rate schedules to reflect monthly billing, and to repeal the existing sections being amended. After hearing the concerns from all of my colleagues, both during the hearing and over the last couple of weeks, around proposed new utility rates for twenty twenty-six, I will be offering an amendment to require Columbus Water and Power to furnish and present a report to this body that shall include, at a minimum, information pertaining to the following. The delinquency rate of customers of Columbus Water and Power. The rate of participation in utility discounts programs. The department has set a goal of doubling the number of sign-ups. We want to know where that progress is six months from now. Details of communication and community engagement plan to increase discount program accessibility to residents residing in multi-unit, I'm sorry, multifamily housing units or subject to a master, or those subject to a master meter. Details regarding the impact of water utilization and the corresponding cost of service provisions to regional high-capacity users. Details regarding plans for Columbus Water and Power to ensure that high-capacity users are supporting a fair share of corresponding infrastructure investment and expansion. Potential modifications to Columbus Water and Power's capital improvement plan to mitigate future rate increases, including a scenario with, under which future rate increases would be limited to the regional rate of inflation. So let me stop there, see if there are any questions just related to the amendment. I know, before I move to amend the legislation, we do have two public speakers signed up to speak. I want to thank them both for sticking with us throughout this long night. The first person signed up is Ms. Nana Watson. Thank you for being here.
Well, good evening, President Harden, and members of council, it's certainly past my bedtime. I'm Nana Watson, and I'm a concerned, seasoned citizen. I am here to share my thoughts on the senior citizen discount offered by the Department of Public Utilities. Councilman Weiss, thank you, and thank you to your aide Chelsea for taking my calls and discussing this program with me. I want to be clear, I am not here to criticize the discount itself, but to offer solutions to make it more accessible. Currently, individuals sixty and over, including myself, are required to submit sensitive documents such as award letters and income tax returns. These requirements are stricter than HEEP and PIP guidelines, and many seniors understandably, understandably hesitate to provide such information. We cannot ignore the technical, the technical divide that exists between cultures, income levels, and especially seasoned citizens. I fall into that category myself. I'm a seasoned citizen, and I do not text well. Technology is not equally accessible or comfortable for everyone. For example, the flyer, which I have before me, I want you all to look at this flyer, and I want you to do whatever you're supposed to do with this QR code, because I don't know what to do with it. But anyway, the code, which assumes everyone has a smartphone, many seasoned citizens do not. There are also concerns about sharing social security information, especially after last year's cyber attack, and uncertainty about who, who views these documents once submitted. My recommendation, the department should conduct outreach at locations seasoned citizens frequent. Individuals could bring their documents for verification and have them returned immediately. This will protect sensitive information and increase participation. How many minutes do I have that things? Oh, I got fifty. If I'm off base, I request clarification. I would also like to know how many individuals over sixty have applied. Based on available data, there are approximately ten, one-hundred-thousand seniors, sixty-five-plus in Columbus, and about thirty-eight percent of older adult households earn less than thirty-five, thirty-five thousand annually, a group likely relying on fixed income. Finally, I would like to ask, does the council have an individual, staff member, or office specifically dedicated to engaging with seasoned citizens? If not, establishing one would really improve outreach, communication, and participation in programs like this. Thank you so much. Have a blessed Thanksgiving.
Thank you, and thank you for staying up past your bedtime. I think it's past all of our bedtimes to be doing this. I just want to say thank you for your advocacy. I'm gonna ask the department, I know that they are working through and will have a full rollout of, I don't think roundtable is the word, but that's all I can think of at nine o'clock, but roundtables with specific community groups to kind of talk through how, what the utility assistance program is, how they can sign up, and to answer questions that they may have. But Deputy Director, I don't know if there is any additional comments you'd like to make.
No, I just want all of you to get this, and I want you to put your phone, do this QR code, and it's gonna take you to a whole bunch of stuff. And so I encourage you to do that, because I'm not able to do it because I'm technology challenged, so I won't be doing any of this. Thank you so much.
Well, we appreciate the solutions offered. Deputy Director, why don't you hold off? We'll have one more speaker, and then I'll, I'll kick it to you to answer to all of them. So our next speaker signed up is Mr. Joe Motel. Joe, thank you for being here.
Good evening, President Harden, Pro Tem Dorrance, members of council. I don't question your concern for having to raise these rates at all. I understand that. I think we all do. Why is the $2.3 billion home run water plant needed? Of our four reservoirs that supply water for residential and commercial use, there's not been any recent warnings of low water supply. The last time the city asked residents to reduce their water usage was thirty-seven years ago due to the severe drought conditions in nineteen eighty-eight. Even last year's drought did not bring warnings from the city officials to conserve water. City officials even stated that no voluntary or mandatory restrictions were needed. At last week's public hearing, Deputy Director Lee pointed to Morpse's twenty-eighteen Central Ohio's fifteen-county population projection of three million by twenty-fifty as one of the reasons to construct additional water plant in two reservoirs. That population guess of about nineteen thousand people per year is about nineteen thousand per year. The thing is, Columbus does not provide water for Central Ohio's fifteen-county region. We provide water for Franklin County, its suburbs, smaller municipalities, Northern Pickaway County, and some unincorporated areas of Delaware County, and unless I'm mistaken, we do not provide water for the other twelve counties. I've questioned Morpse's crystal ball population projections since day one. Two months ago, the Ohio Department of Development projected that Ohio could lose five-point-seven percent of its people between twenty-twenty and twenty-fifty, or about six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand residents. And I think we can all agree that Trump's immigration policies are going to slow immigrant population growth that has helped offset declining birth rates here in Columbus and Franklin County. According to the U.S. Census, since twenty-nineteen, the city of Columbus's population has grown on average of about fifty-seven hundred people. In twenty-twenty-one, Columbus's population actually decreased by three-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-four, and only in twenty-twenty-four did population grow over one percent to one-point-four percent, or twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-four people. Deputy Director Lee also touched on my concerns related to last year's drought and the fact that city officials did not issue any water usage restrictions during that time. He continued stating that possible further drought conditions also warrant the need for two additional reservoirs and a water plant. With all due respect to Director Lee, he can't predict the weather conditions any better than I can. And hell, there might even be a record rainfall over the next five, ten years. We don't know. Look, I fully understand that the city needs to consider future water and sewer upgrades for our residents and businesses. But another concern of mine is that are these upgrades being made to primarily serve the needs of our residents, or were these billion-dollar projects a result of lobbying efforts and under-the-table deals between the mayor and the likes of the Columbus Partnership, One Columbus, and Jobs, Ohio, in order to attract and provide new water-guzzling data centers that compete with agricultural, residential, and other industrial water users? Along with the increased urban heat island effects, noise pollution, and the further reduction of greenfields, farmland, and natural habitat that these data centers bring, water usage should prioritize the quality of life and the survival of residents in our ecosystem rather than increasing the wealth of greedy billion-dollar dataset owners in the other water-devouring businesses. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Motel, thank you for being here, for your advocacy, and, you know, continuing to push us, to push the department and be better.
I appreciate your office and all the help they gave.
Yeah, I want to kick it to Deputy Director Lee, just to respond to some of the comments from both of our speakers, but thank you for...
Appreciate it.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Wyche. I'll respond to the first speaker, just on the discount program and the senior program. Number one, we appreciate all residents' feedback on our program, and we're not perfect. We will accept all ideas and innovative approaches. Our program is modeled on pretty much other programs across the country. As far as security of information that is required, we do require proof of income, proof of age, so there's certain documents, sensitive documents, that are necessary in order to validate those items. But I agree that getting out of the community and having residents come up and sign, bring their documentation, bring their sensitive materials to these tabling events is something that we definitely are planning on doing in twenty-twenty-six and in future years. It's, as I said before, it's really a resource issue and a partnership issue. So, we're building up our resources. We should have more events in twenty-twenty-six, so there'd be a lot more opportunities for seniors to sign up. So, again, we appreciate the feedback from all residents on how we can make our programs better. On the second question, we do not have a crystal ball about where we're going to be by twenty-fifty. We don't know if those Morpse projections are accurate, but what we do know is that we've got limited capacity at our plants. We know how much our plants can produce as far as water. And we don't operate our plants, as I've said before. We don't redline our plants. We operate industry standards, eighty percent of our rated capacity. And so, our projections already show that we will be at that rated capacity by twenty-thirty. So, we don't know what's going to happen. If we are, if we do hit three million, we are going to be well-prepared. But we have to take the steps now in order to provide water for the Columbus region. We do have up-ground reservoirs. We invested in up-ground reservoirs to allow water to be available for Columbus residents during drought conditions. Have you seen some of our reservoirs? They are very low. We have not implemented any restrictions. Yes, we have levels where we will implement restrictions if needed, but we're not there yet. So, we still have plans to build more up-ground reservoirs in order to provide more storage. Again, we do not know what the future of the water supply is going to be in the Columbus region. So, again, all of these things take years of planning and projections, and the water plant had been in the works for thirty years as far as our planning horizon. So, again, this is a project on the water plant that's going to be eight years before it's actually built and operational. So, about twenty-thirty-three, twenty-thirty-four, we'll be operating that fourth plant. So, we believe that we'll be well-positioned to serve the growing region.
And I appreciate that. I think we spent some time during the hearing kind of talking through the challenges of waiting to build the capacity when we need more capacity. But the reality is, we are dangerously close now. These projects take years to build, and we have to make the investments today to ensure that by the time we are over capacity, there is additional water to support the growth that we're seeing in the region. So, with that, I first move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Thanks, Timborosa de Podia, Betty de Akawar Dorrance Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Thank you. In addition to the amendment that was just accepted, ordinance thirty-eighty-two dash twenty-twenty-five authorizes an increase in water rates and fees effective January one, twenty-twenty-six. For reference, residents inside the city of Columbus who use approximately one-hundred-and-sixty-five gallons of water per day are estimated to see their bill increase ten dollars and forty-eight cents per month, or one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and eighty cents per year. Low-income residents are estimated to see their bill increase eight dollars and fifty-seven, eight dollars and fifty-seven cents per month, or one-hundred-and-two dollars and seventy-nine cents per year. Finally, those outside the city or in suburban areas are estimated to see their bill increase twelve dollars and forty-eight cents per month, or one-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents per year. Let me stop there, see if there are any additional questions or comments from my colleagues on these proposed rate structures. Seeing none, I move for passage as amended.
Thanks, Timborosa de Podia, Betty de Akawar Dorrance Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass. Thank you. Next, I have ordinance thirty-eighty-three dash twenty-twenty-five to amend various sections of Chapter eleven-forty-seven of the Columbus City Codes to enact a new sanitary sewer service rates for the year beginning January one, twenty-twenty-six, to expand eligibility for low-income and eligible senior customer discount programs, to modify the name of the low-income discount program, to update wet weather fees, to update the rate structure, I'm sorry, rate schedules to reflect monthly billing, to update meter service charges, to update sewer capacity fees, and to repeal the existing sections being amended. As previously mentioned, residents inside the city of Columbus who are approximately, who use approximately one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, I'm sorry, one-hundred-and-sixty-five gallons of water per day are estimated to see their combined water and sewer bill increase ten dollars and forty-eight cents per month, or one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and eighty cents per year. With the proposed increases, our combined water and sewer rates will still remain lower than most regional peer cities. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Thanks, Timborosa de Podia, Betty de Akawar Dorrance Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance thirty-eighty-four dash twenty-twenty-five to amend Sections eleven-forty-nine dot oh-seven and eleven-forty-nine dot oh-eight of Columbus City Codes to enact the new storm water fees for the year beginning January one, twenty-twenty-six, and to repeal the existing sections being amended. The proposed two percent increase in storm rates will result in an average thirty-one cent increase per year for the average residential storm water bill. For reference, the average storm water bill in twenty-twenty-five is fifteen dollars and forty-nine cents. With the proposed increase, this bill will increase to fifteen dollars and eighty cents in twenty-twenty-six. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Thanks, Timborosa de Podia, Betty de Akawar Dorrance Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Thank you. And last, I have thirty-eighty-five dash twenty-twenty-five to amend Chapter eleven-sixty-three of Columbus City Codes to enact new electric service rates for the year beginning January one, twenty-twenty-six, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to increase the power low-income discount, to enact a new code generation rate, and to repeal the existing sections being amended. The division of power, which includes the entire city of Columbus' streetlight system, is funded through rates paid by approximately nineteen thousand residents in commercial electricity accounts. Let me state that again. The entire city's lighting plan is funded by nineteen thousand residents in commercial electric rates. That is a problem. That is something we need to address going forward, but it also speaks to why these investments are so desperately needed. I also want to just make sure folks are aware, this has nothing to do with AEP customers. I know there's a lot of confusion between who is providing power. This is strictly for Columbus' power, a division of power customers. Depending upon income class, residents will see an increase of approximately seven to eleven dollars per month in electricity bills, or approximately eighty-one to one-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars a year. So, let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Councilmember Bengston?
I just wanted to wait till we got to all through all four councilmember Wyche and Chair, just to really thank you for your leadership. This is tough stuff to get done in this climate, and I think, as both our colleagues said, we don't take it lightly. But I want to thank you for your leadership, because I believe that when this first came to us, it was much higher. But it was because of you and your leadership that it is, that I would say more palatable place. But I also want to thank you because you took a comprehensive approach. It wasn't just simply the low-income programs that we're talking about. I think there's an aspiration to have those increase as we increase capacity, but it was also looking at just our simple fee structure. Why is it that larger water providers were not being charged the same as residents, and looking at that comprehensively, now holding accountable these larger water users, now making sure that our fees of tapping and building these larger facilities are commensurate with that cost? So, I just want to thank you for being comprehensive, but also through this process, I think pushing us to look at a legacy system that has gotten us to this point. And as we continue to grow and evolve, not just only as a city, but as a region, we have to question the status quo and what got us here, because it is clear that it's not sustainable. And so, I want to thank you again for just a very thorough job of this, the conversations behind the scenes, helping me walk through utility rates. I just get my bill every three months and pay it. I only got two people in my household, well, three people in my household, and I still got the same water bill. But I jokingly say that we don't take this lightly, and I think that you have done a really great job of walking us through this and getting us to a place that is, again, more palatable, but also holds folks accountable that as we continue to see these rate increases, because the investment is going to still need to be there, that we are thinking about our residents first. So, thank you again.
Well, I appreciate that. I will say, the department has been extremely collaborative as we've kind of approached what this looks like. And I don't think we're done, right? Especially for those high users, how do we truly get them to pay for the actual infrastructure it costs us to put into the ground? So, I appreciate your support, as well as the support of all of my colleagues, as we answered a lot of tough questions and kind of pushed the department to be a little bit more open about the process for setting rates, so that we all can stay informed. The challenge we all have before us when we are on this dais is that the decisions we make today impact the city and the region for the next ten to twenty years. And so, it can be extremely challenging to say, yes, we have to do this and, you know, do things that our residents are not going to be extremely happy about, but twenty years from now, they will be thankful that the capacity is there for them to continue to have clean drinking water in the future. And with that, I move for passage.
Thanks, Timborosa de Podia, Betty de Akawar Dorrance Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have and rules and policy.
Mr. Chair, now we'll go back to regular order. And the next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Committee chaired by Councilmember Rosado de Padilla. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This was like playing roulette. I was like, who's up next? I know, I got it, I got it. Okay, I have two ordinances in public, only two ordinances in Public Service and Transportation. The first is ordinance twenty-eighty-nine twenty-twenty-five to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the bikeway development, Georgesville Road, shared-use path, Parkwick Drive to Sullivan Avenue, and to authorize an expenditure of twenty-five thousand nine-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. This project consists of installing a new shared-use path along the east side of Georgesville Road from Parkwick Drive to Sullivan Avenue on the south leg west of Georgesville Road. It will also install sidewalk curb ramps along the north side of Parkwick Drive to fill gaps between Georgesville Road and Bay Club Drive. The city must acquire a certain fee simple title and lesser real estate located in the vicinity of Georgesville Road from Parkwick Drive to Sullivan Avenue. The city's acquisition of the real estate will help make, improve, or repair certain portions of the public right-of-way located in the vicinity of Georgesville Road from Parkwick to Sullivan Avenue. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Thanks, Timborosa de Podia, Betty de Akawar Dorrance Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance twenty-nine fifty-eight twenty-twenty-five to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into a contract with Esteca Systems LLC relative to the City Works Asset Management System to waive the formal bidding requirements of the Columbus City Codes and to authorize the expenditure of one-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars from various funds to pay for the contract and to declare an emergency. City Works AMS, a proprietary software solution, is a customizable citywide asset management solution used by various city of Columbus departments, including the Department of Public Service, the Department of Public Utilities, and the Department of Technology. The Department of Public Service has a need for software and services that will be used to support the management of assets within the department. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Thanks, Timborosa de Podia, Betty de Akawar Dorrance Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all for me this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee. That committee is chaired by Press Pro Tem. Press Pro Tem, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I have ordinance number two-nine-seven-seven dash twenty-twenty-five to amend Management Compensation Plan. Ordinance number two-seven-one-three dash twenty-thirteen as amended by amending Section five D, Section five E, Section five F, and declared emergency. This ordinance amends the Management Compensation Plan by enacting, retitling, and abolishing classifications based on the Civil Service Commission action and updating the twenty-twenty-six minimum wage accordance with the Ohio Constitution. This ordinance on tonight's agenda is emergency as it is immediately necessary to amend certain provisions of the Management Compensation Plan to meet obligations to the city's employees, departments, and the Civil Service Commission. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Thanks, Timborosa de Podia, Betty de Akawar Dorrance Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
And Council President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember Pluriz, yours.
Thank you so much, Council President. Tonight, we have one vote, or I'm sorry, one ordinance, my gosh, my brain is done for the day. We have one ordinance tonight in our Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, and it is ordinance twenty-three twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-five to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with the Center for Disease Detection LLC for medical laboratory services for the period of November first, twenty-twenty-five, to October thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six, to authorize the expenditure not to exceed five-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars from the Health Department grant fund. thousand dollars from the Health Department grant fund. Columbus Public Health currently provides testing services for all different types of infectious and communicable diseases, serving the Ben Franklin Tuberculosis Clinic, the Sexual Health and Wellness Center, Immunization Clinic, and Alcohol and Drug Programs. They conduct between thirty thousand to forty thousand tests per year, ranging from drugs of abuse aid and treatment, TB testing and management of disease, gynecological and neurological exams, STI testing, annual pap smears, HPV testing, the list goes on and on. That list is not all inclusive. Historically, a portion of our laboratory services have been conducted on-site through Columbus Public Health's in-house laboratory. It's the last local health department in the state of Ohio with its own in-house lab that currently runs and processes about thirteen different types of clinical tests, which is actually a fraction of over the one hundred types of tests that are currently being conducted through the Health Department's test services each year. And then the rest of the other hundred types of tests are being processed by an external contract through LabCorp. So as you'll remember earlier this year, to better serve patients receiving care through Columbus Public Health, we moved to adopt a new electronic health record system, which is Epic. This is a change that will allow us to better coordinate care, both internally as well as externally with external partners. It is rooted in a shift that's rooted in best practices. You see that reflected in the state psychiatric hospitals moved to all adopt Epic earlier this year, and we're looking at the hospital systems here currently locally are all utilizing Epic, as well as several nonprofit partners because of its, you know, interchangeability and interoperability across different types of platforms. And so we have now, we are now moving to that system. Unfortunately, per information that was shared by the Health Department earlier this year with us during one of our prior meetings, the move to Epic requires us to only have one point of reference for our labs, which means that all of those contracts are needed to be consolidated into one. It is, it would take millions of dollars to update our current laboratory equipment to be able to bring that online, to conduct all of those different types of tests, which the Health Department has deemed to be cost prohibitive. We've heard from, you know, several meetings ago from our partners at ASME, who I know are here today, and thank you for being in it for the long haul with us tonight. And I think broadly, they expressed concerns to us in three main buckets, I'll summarize. Of course, the potential impact on members who are working in the lab, four employees currently. The second one being concerns to impact to timely patient care and quality of care. And then that third bucket, looking at cost. You know, we anticipate that this contract will save additional dollars because consolidating these contracts can do this much more cost effectively, but you know, are there questions about the, there were questions about the RFQ and the estimates of tests that were going to be conducted. And so I just want to thank our partners from ASME who are here tonight for your advocacy and collaboration through that process. You know, I think that through those conversations, we were able to get questions answered related to those three buckets, and we're also able to include additional provisions as an amendment in this ordinance, which you received this afternoon, that addresses those things. Making sure that first and foremost, this shift is not going to have an adverse impact to our clients' ability to access the life-saving care that they need when they need it, if they need it. Secondly, to make sure that this contract, you know, doesn't have a negative fiscal impact on our city and on our budget, which I know there were chief concerns brought to us about that. And then also through collaboration with the Health Department and the city's HR program to make sure that these employees, as they are transitioning, have been, you know, taken care of. And so if these conditions are not met at the end of next year, towards the end of next year, as they're looking at potential contract renewals or changes in contract, per this provision, Columbus Public Health will submit a report to us in writing that will indicate whether or not the, you know, the goals that we are trying to achieve here have been met, you know, whether or not there has been impact to patient care, ensuring that the cost hasn't, you know, risen so that it would be, you know, have a negative impact on our budget. And then we can reevaluate that at that point in time, giving council the authority to potentially not renew the contract should those criteria not be met. And so at this point in time, you know, I think I'll turn it over to our Assistant Health Commissioner here, Tiffany Kraus, who, you know, I was hoping today you might be able to break down for us a little bit further why this change is necessary, what, a little bit more specifically, the fiscal impact of a shift like this will be, or the impact of not making this change. And then also, if you could talk a little bit about the transition of these employees and the steps that I know that you've taken to support the people who would have been impacted by this transition.
Thank you, Council President Harden, Chair Green, and members of council for the opportunity to talk about required changes in our lab that will help us better serve our clients and save the city nearly a quarter of a million dollars annually. The electronic health records system, Epic, also known as MyChart, will be implemented at Columbus Public Health in May twenty twenty-six to better serve our clients. Epic requires one reference lab, and our in-house lab did not have the capacity to handle this requirement. Our in-house lab previously handled only thirteen percent of our tests. We did not have the lab equipment or staff to consolidate our lab as required for Epic. It's important to note that while we are no longer doing stat tests, we are providing point-of-care testing, which increases access to testing for high-risk individuals. Excuse me. Clinical health, alcohol and drug, and sexual health promotion provide point-of-care testing in our clinics and at community locations to remove barriers and increase health equity. Our testing has evolved over the last several years following current updated CDC guidelines to test based on symptoms and risk factors. Our testing now aligns with every other healthcare provider in the city. While it's unfortunate that this new contract impacted four employees, we did reach a negotiated agreement with the union for those employees. Additionally, we are saving taxpayers at least a quarter of a million dollars annually with this required change. We're confident that this lab contract, sorry, my eyes are tired. I apologize. We are confident that this lab contract with Center for Disease Detection will not cause delays in the professional care we provide our clients. In fact, they will not notice any changes in their care at all. Columbus Public Health is committed to providing the same professional and timely services to our community. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. Before I, before I open it up for questions from my colleagues, I just want to say a couple of things, and I think that, I think we've had a couple of ordinances tonight where I could have said these same comments along with them, so I figured I would just wait until the very end of the night, when we're already almost asleep, to give them all at once now. But, you know, in the moment that we find ourselves in right now here economically, I think as a city, we are also having, like every other industry, every other business, every family across our community, having to make tough decisions every single day about the things that we're investing in and our spending, and have to be looking at the opportunities, as we always should as a city, you know, to be good stewards of public dollars and responsible stewards of public dollars, but looking at ways that we can be doing the same thing as every other person and every other family across our community and tightening our belt. Because, you know, while we still are luckier than a lot of other cities, our size, or, you know, of any size really, where currently our revenue is enough to cover our current city's expenses, we also know that there are a lot more people across our community that are experiencing hardship, a lot of organizations that are doing the work day in and day out to support those people experiencing hardship that are struggling more than ever before. And historically, the city has been a small sliver in the pie that has been, that has been funding and supporting that work, and the funding sources that have historically borne the burden of that are not going as far as they once did. And so we heard from Pastor Davis earlier today, I thought it was especially, you know, prescient in this moment, that he said, you know, we can't just focus on the inner work. And in this case of the city, we also have to focus on the outer work, the external work. And that means that we have to figure out how to stretch every single tax dollar as far as it can go. And you heard us talk about those, that issue tonight when we were talking about an economic development ordinance. You heard us talk about that issue when we were talking about the utility rate increases, which are necessary in order for us to make the investments that we need in our infrastructure to sustain our growth. You hear it, you're going to hear it throughout our budget process as we consider, you know, some of the things that have been proposed to us, including, you know, a, you know, potential decrease in the amount of funding that we've given our shelter system historically at a time when they need it more and more than ever before. As you heard in the Columbus Dispatch, when the shelter partners got together to talk about that, you hear it during the government shutdown, when Mid-Ohio Food Collective didn't know how they were going to put food in people's bellies. You heard it from the Human Services Chamber, when they came to us and said, we have a one hundred and fifty million dollar gap across our continuums of care. You hear it in the Columbus Business Journal, when our partners at Life Care Alliance came out and told us that they have a two million dollar funding gap to take care of our aging neighbors. And let me just tell you, if you're a social worker like me, and you work in a nonprofit organization, or as I call them, tax-exempt businesses, talking about those funding gaps that we have is not an easy thing to do, because historically, what's happened, instead of looking at the systems that have created these inequities and not allowed organizations like these to become fiscally sustainable, what we often do is we point the finger at them and, you know, assert that it's because they don't know the basics of addition and subtraction, or they don't understand what the green numbers compared to the red numbers on the spreadsheet mean, because they do. We hear it in every room we walk into, in every building, every family, every person that we talk to. I could go, I could literally go on and on, but what it comes down to is this. This was a difficult conversation that we had to have tonight that had a real direct impact on our workforce. And as I, you know, as I've alluded to now, it's not going to be the last difficult decision that we're going to have to have. But simply facing what we know that we're facing as a community right now, you know, making a financial investment of millions and millions of dollars to update this lab so that we can provide the high quality of care that Columbus residents deserve at a time when we are having to make incredibly tough decisions is just not something that I think that we can do at this moment in time. And so, you know, we have worked really hard with our partners in labor and had honest conversations with them about all of these issues as well, to make sure that employees have been supported during this transition, to make sure that we have mechanisms in place to provide appropriate level of oversight, so that if those expectations fall short, we have the ability to remedy those issues in an appropriate way. And so I think, before I end this TED Talk here, I'll just say, you know, for those that are still watching, you know, as we're having difficult decisions about rate increases, utility rates, and, you know, so on and so forth, I want this to be indicative of, you know, we're also looking at ways to be as effective with every tax dollar that we have coming through here. And so I hope that, you know, our partners across the community will join us in that effort. With that, do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions?
Chair, just really quick, I'm going to be very, very fast. You know, fundamentally, you know, I just do not believe in outsourcing public work, right? That decision was made by the Department of Health. That's ultimately not what's before us actually here right now. If you've listened to me a lot, that's what is actually before the body here. Ultimately, these services have to be provided to our residents. You know, council was not consulted about whether or not this is a good idea or a bad idea about outsourcing this. I think we have policies in place to make sure that those decisions should be made very, very carefully. I appreciate our friends from labor that have asked really tough questions. The amendment here tonight that Councilmember Green is talking about is because of those tough questions that they have asked, to make sure that when this actually happens, there should actually be a savings that's attached to it, especially if there's question marks about whether or not those savings are going to be actualized by the residents, because we should not eliminate public employment easily. While I'll be supportive of this legislation because residents do in fact need these services, it is frustrating and difficult to be put the position afterwards in order to allow these things to move forward, to provide those residents. So this is better because of the engagement, and ultimately, this is the kind of standard that I would expect from us moving forward about whether or not these decisions are going to be made and how, before they get to this body. So with that, thank you, Chair, for your work on this.
And Chair, I just wanted to echo what President Pro Tem said. First of all, for our folks at ASME, thank you for being here. Thank you for always advocating for our folks. Thank you for hanging in there tonight, because this is a long evening and hoping, working to get the best possible outcome for us to do that inside work as we do the outside work. And also, I just also want to thank you, Chair, for also pushing for review so that we could go back and look at this, because I think there are sometimes unintended consequences. We can make projections. That doesn't mean things always work, right? Because we're still humans, and we are still providing a critical need for folks. And so if that is not working, we need to change course. I'm glad that we have that review so that we have the ability to do that, because what also weighed heavy on me was that outside work was ensuring that folks can get the care that they need, and there's not going to be a disruption in that. So thank you, thank you again for your advocacy, and thank you, Chair, for your leadership.
Seeing no other questions or comments, with that, I move for passage.
Clerk, please.
Actually, no, I move to, yeah, I was literally looking at it on my computer screen as I said the wrong thing. Seeing none, first I move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Clerk, please call the row. Banks, Timberosa, DePodia, Beatty, DeAcau, Dorance, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Amended.
And now I move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the row. Banks, Timberosa, DePodia, Beatty, DeAcau, Dorance, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you so much. That's all I have for myself in this committee tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We are going to move on to the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Remy chairs that committee.
Thank you very much, President Pro Tem. Tonight I have two ordinances in Public Safety and Criminal Justice versus three thousand two, two twenty twenty-five, to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to issue a purchase order to SubAquatics Inc. for the purchase of five Class II Phil stations for use in emergency firefighting operations to authorize the expenditure of fifty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty cents from the general fund to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. The Division of Fire has the immediate need to purchase three Class II Phil stations to replace some of the current Phil stations due to the unsafe open container system that does not provide protection in the event of a system failure, bottle breach, or explosion. The competitive bidding is requested to be waived due to the vendor's, quote, "expiring less than a hundred and eighty days from the date of the award." Purchasing has advised that due to the expiration date of the, quote, "the vendor's bid has been deemed non-responsive since they were the lowest bidder." Purchasing has reached out to them to see if they would extend the expiration date to meet the a hundred and eighty-day requirement. The vendor complied and supplied an updated quote that meets the requirement. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, DePodia, Beatty, DeAcau, Green, Remy, White, President Pro Tem, Dorance.
Ordinance passed.
Next, we have thirty eighty-nine, twenty twenty-five, to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management on behalf of the municipal court clerk to enter into a contract with Three SG for the provision of the software maintenance, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, to authorize an expenditure of twenty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-four cents from the municipal court clerk computer fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance allows an imaging system to convert existing court documents into electronic images necessary to optimize storage space and reduce future storage costs while providing for more efficient access to court documentation information. The competitive bidding process is requested to be waived due to a pre-existing business relationship between Three SG and the municipal court clerk and the company's expertise in this business area. The clerk's office is following state term schedule in lieu of formal bidding process. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, DePodia, Beatty, DeAcau, Green, Remy, White, President Pro Tem, Dorance.
Passed.
President Pro Tem, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you very much. Next committee to come for council, the Public Utilities Sustainability Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember White. Councilmember White, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Tonight in Public Utilities Sustainability Committee, I have ordinance twenty-five ninety dash twenty twenty-five to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a professional services contract modification with Black and Beach Corporation for the Wastewater Treatment Facilities General Program Number Five Project, and to authorize an Facilities General Program Number Five Project and to authorize an expenditure of up to $1,200,000 from the Sanitary Bond Fund for the contract. This contract was originally planned as a three-year effort with annual funding modifications because it includes tasks which stretch across several funding years, and the nature of the work requires the firm to develop a deep and detailed understanding of our plan operations. The information provided, Black and Beach assists and guides the city in decision-making on environmental issues. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Protem, Dorance.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next I have 2692-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a contract modification with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated to add additional funding for the Construction Administration Construction Inspection Services 2023-2025 contract to amend the 2025 capital improvement budget, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of up to $1,3,805 from the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund for the contract, and to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for the project. This ordinance provides funding for Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated to perform construction administration inspection services for the Atlanta Drive area water line improvements. These improvement projects, which are focused in the greater Hilltop area, include the replacement or rehabilitation of water lines and pump stations that have a high break frequency and of valves that are inoperable. Replacement of these water lines will improve water service, decrease burden on water maintenance operations, and reduce water loss. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Protem, Dorance.
Passed.
Thank you. Next I have ordinance 2708-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a, I'm sorry, to enter into a service agreement with Thinkwell LLC for Leadership Development Program Series Services, sorry, and to authorize the expenditure of $267,683.75 split between the electricity, water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater operating funds. Due to budgetary considerations, the department is no longer moving forward with the implementation of this leadership program. However, in order to halt this process, this council must defeat this ordinance. So I know it is late, but I want to be clear on what is about to happen. In a moment, I will move for disapproval, and I will be voting yes. So I would hope everyone would do the same so that this ordinance is defeated. Let me pause for questions. Seeing none, I move for disapproval.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Protem, Dorance.
Ordinance defeated.
There you go. You didn't even have to do anything. Look at that. All right, next I have ordinance 2809-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a subscription contract with OW Investors LLC doing business as Mars Company for the upgrade, maintenance, and support of an existing Mars meter test branch system on behalf of the Division of Water to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of $62,484 from the Water Operating Fund. Test bench systems are utilized to facilitate the certification of water meters that measure water usage for the department, and Mars Company is the only manufacturer that produces upgrades for this existing Mars water meter test branch in the United States. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Protem, Dorance.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next I have ordinance 2869-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to renew and modify a contract with Robert Services Group Incorporated for electric power systems maintenance services to the Department of Public Utilities to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,760,000 from the electricity, water, and sewerage and drainage operating funds, and excise the first renewal option to extend the term of the contract for an additional year. The Department of Public Utilities has identified various electric power equipment in their facilities that require maintenance services. Services provided under this contract will include the study, inspection, testing, maintenance, repair, and replacement of industrial equipment and systems. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Protem, Dorance.
Passed.
Thank you. Next I have ordinance 2876-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a contract modification with EMA Incorporated for the Automatic Meter Reading Project and to authorize an expenditure of up to $1,200,000 from the Water Bond Fund for this contract modification. The Automatic Meter Reading Project involves replacing old water and electrical meters with the goal of improving services, decreasing burden on maintenance operations, reducing water loss, and improving revenue. This planned contract modification is necessary to continue providing program management assistance during the implementation of the project and installation of the meters. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Protem, Dorance.
Passed.
Thank you. Next I have ordinance 2924-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with General Temperature Control Incorporated for the Fairwood Facility HVAC Replacement Project and to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,248,300 for the project. This project consists of the replacement of the 1250 Fairwood Facility Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Unit 27. This unit provides proper environmental controls for essential process equipment, electrical equipment furnishings, structures, and the documents within the facility. Unit 27 is approaching the end of its useful life, and it's becoming increasingly difficult to repair and maintain. Its replacement will help extend the life of the building and all of the equipment inside. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Protem, Dorance.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next I have ordinance 2933-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a contract modification for Parsons Avenue Water Plant Hypochlorite Disinfection Improvements with CH2M Hill Engineers Incorporated to add additional funding, to amend the 2025 capital improvement budget, to authorize the appropriation of funds to authorize the Director of, sorry, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to apply for and accept a loan from the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Program to make this ordinance contingent upon Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,533,000 from the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund. The Parsons Avenue Water Plant Hypochlorite Disinfection Improvements Project consists of engineering, design, and construction of improvements to the disinfection, storage, and fee facilities at the Parsons Avenue Water Plant. This project will enable the plant to convert from utilizing a gas-based process to a liquid sodium hypochlorite-based process to address the risk of, address the risks associated with gaseous chlorine system, while providing a safer storage and handling system for plant staff. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Protem, Dorance.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next I have ordinance 3016-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to participate in the Verizon Wireless National Association of Procurement Professionals Value Point Cooperative Purchase Agreement, to authorize the expenditure of $13,780 from the Water Operating Fund and to waive competitive bidding provisions of City Code. The cooperative agreement will support the creation of a secure, isolated network that connects the Department of Public Utility field sites to the control network. A request to waive competitive bidding is necessary as Verizon is the only carrier which is able to configure a private, isolated cellular network segment not exposed to the public internet. In addition, additionally, at a per-site cost of $15 a month, Verizon services are more cost-effective than current data-line contracts with other providers. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Protem, Dorance.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next I have ordinance 3020-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify the power supply agreement with American Electric Power Energy Partners Incorporated to add funding in the amount of $15,310,100 and to authorize an expenditure of $15,310,100 from the Electricity Operating Fund. This funding is necessary to purchase power renewable energy credits for the service months of January and February 2026 in order to meet the energy demands of the Department of Public Utilities and its customers throughout central Ohio. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Protem, Dorance.
Ordinance passed.
And last in my committee, I have ordinance 3053-2025 to authorize the transfer of $1,547,197.47 between audited classes in the Water Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the city auditor to transfer funds within the Water Operating Fund for additional personnel funds. Due to overtime costs and hiring trends occurring faster than anticipated, currently available funding is only enough to cover personnel funding through November. This transfer of additional funds is requested to support personnel costs throughout the end of the year. Emergency designation is requested to allow these financial transactions to be posted to the city's accounting systems immediately to meet payroll costs for the December pay periods and allow divisions to operate without interruptions through the end of 2025. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Protem, Dorance.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. That is all I have from my committee this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. I know we jumped around the agenda quite a bit tonight, so if anyone has an ordinance remaining, please speak now. Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Protem, Dorance.
We are adjourned. We do have a number of non-agenda speakers tonight. First, we have Ms.